So my friend should call this meeting of the Macon County Commissioners and Commissioners. We'd like to welcome you guys here. Most of you who are here, some of our regular media folks and whatnot, recognize that we have a lot of special guests with us tonight. Girl Scouts are here by invitation, and we'll be talking about that in a little more than a second. But welcome, greetings, all of you, thanks for being here. First thing, do we have any announcements by any member of the board? What I would like to do is recognize our Girl Scouts. They're here tonight, they're going to bring the Girl Scout Promise and also the Pledge of Allegiance. We will leave that to them. Girls, if you would, yeah.
Please join us in reciting the Girl Scout Promise.
On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Girl Scouts attention. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and guests, attention. Please join us in reciting the pledge to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Thanks, and girls, starting to skip a bit. Are you girls all from the same troop, or?
No, no, no.
Who's one of the leaders here? Tell us a little after.
I think we've got five groups represented. Casey Queen is the leader. Maria, Cindy, Sarah, and then my group. So we've got five or six groups. I don't know how many Girl Scouts.
So how many does that represent? How many Girl Scouts?
We have about 100 Girl Scouts registered in the county.
Thank you, leaders. They're welcome. Thank you, girls. We appreciate that Girl Scout Promise very much, and your leadership and a very important pledge of allegiance to our flag. We very appreciate that you were here. We've got something special we're going to do on the agenda for you, and with permission of my fellow Commissioners, this is in the agenda as item 8D. Would there be any objection if I move that to do that Girl Scout proclamation now? And get it on there. What I'm going to do, although you have a copy of this, and if you would, I want to rotate. I want to start with Mr. Tate. You read the first paragraph in the Richard Pepper's. We're going to read this. It's in the paper. It's the Girl Scout Centennial Proclamation. This is the, yesterday, I think, when the girls, was the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts. So we, as Commissioners, wanted to recognize you and all those who've come before you. It's sort of hard to think about 100 years, especially if we held you guys 10, 11. Okay, sorry. Maybe y'all want to add a year to that. But it's hard to imagine something's been around 100 years, so we wanted to take this time and do that. So, Mr. Tate, would you read the first paragraph? I'll pass you mine.
That's all right.
8D. All right, let's read the proclamation, and then we'll...
Whereas March 12th, 2012 marks the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, which began in 1912, when Juliette Daisy Gordon Lowe gathered 18 girls in Savannah, Georgia to provide them the opportunity to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually.
Whereas the 100 years Girl Scouting has helped build billions of girls and women of courage, confidence, and character who act to make the world a better place. And?
Whereas the award-winning Girl Scout Leadership Program helps girls discover themselves and their values, connect with others, and take action to make the world a better place. And?
Whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honoring Girl Scout Academy, requires girls to make a measurable and sustainable difference in their community, and honors leadership in the Girl Scout tradition. The Gold Award recipients have already changed the world as high school students.
Core programs around science, technology, engineering, math, STEM, environmental studies, health, living, and natural leadership, and important citizenship, head girl development, and solid foundation leadership.
Whereas since its starting in 2000, the Girl Scout Research Institute has become an internationally recognized center for original research, research reviews, and surveys that provide significant insights into the lives of our girls.
Whereas through the dedication, time, and talent of thousands of volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, the Girl Scout program has brought to more than 70,000 girls in grades K through 12 across the state of North Carolina.
Whereas today, more than 50 million American women are Girl Scout alumni. 3.3 million girls and adult volunteers are active members, and Girl Scouts is the largest member of the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts, a global movement comprised of more than 10 million girls in 145 countries worldwide. And?
Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Macon County, do hereby applaud the Girl Scouts of the United States of America for the 100 years of leadership and expertise as a voice far and of girls, and salute them as they proudly proclaimed 2012 as the Year of the Girls!
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'd like to have a motion to approve this proclamation.
Go move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation, as we just read, for moving and celebrating 100 years of Girl Scouting. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you, girls, for being here.
This is what we call parliamentary procedure. We're not really going against it, but I've got to ask. It's just quite the way you conduct business. If you ask for a motion, somebody says they want to do this, and somebody else seconds it, that means they agree with that first person. Then we have discussion. So any discussion? And now say, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify. I'm saying, ah, opposed. The motion passes unanimously, so we have declared this Centennial Proclamation for Girl Scouts. Thank you again, girls.
Mr. Corbin?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you say one thing? We have girls in this room. You mentioned the Gold Award, which is the highest honor that you can earn, you know, when you're a senior in high school. We have girls in here that, ones that are in fourth and fifth grade, that have earned their Bronze Award, which is the highest level at the junior stage, and we have cadets that have earned their Silver, which is the highest honor at the cadet stage. So we don't have any at the Gold yet, but we have girls that have earned the other honors that are underneath Gold.
But it won't be long, will it, this tablet?
We hope not.
Right. Could we get our picture made with y'all? Could we do that?
I love that.
Yeah. Now, I know you don't want your picture made with us, but we like to have our picture made with you. Okay? So all the Girl Scouts who have here, let's have our pictures painted together. This special, special week, let's gather around best of camp. We slide in, and we'll celebrate.
Kristy, can I have her?
You need to watch the picture. All the girls in the back, shorter girls in front.
Yeah. No, we said.
All right. Everybody look back at the camera.
They look like they're scared to death.
They look scared of us. We're always scared. I'm standing between me and them.
You've got to wait for Marie. She'll take about five.
No problem. Thank you, girls. Now, girls, we realize somebody had to go, have some previous commitments that I've already explained, so feel free to leave. Let us say thank you for being here. Parents and leaders, we appreciate that. We've got, thank you, girls. Do we have the sheet for public comment? It's probably up here. Use the chair if you need to. Did anyone, I want to speak here in the public comments here. We didn't have anyone sign up, which is fine. Just want you to make sure you don't miss anybody. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move right along. Adjustments and approval of the agenda? More members, although you have received your packets in advance, and are there any items we need to add or delete or change in the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, under new business of TNC, I would like to add a special recognition from citizens of the county.
Okay. Is that the one you swept after that?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, quick, in item 10D, add a little discussion of Hudson Library, security services.
Okay. Okay, that's TNC and D.
Chairman, if you would, ahead to under new business of B, we have QZDB and QSCB applications. Maybe B1, I'd like to work that on our process. If we do all, we'll have the other one.
That would be a superintendent's here too. That's right. Okay, that's fine. Anything else? Wrong?
Under report, oh, see? Just under reports, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention real quick, that we, some of us, were in Washington at the NACO conference. A lot of people don't know about the National Association of Counties, what they really do, and I'd like to just give them one minute before I...
First, that one minute before. We'll make that 8D. Anything else? Well, gentlemen, you've heard the changes to the agenda. We'll be adding 8D, NACO report, under new business, which is number 10. We'll add C, is a special recognition. Bishop Tate mentioned the Hudson Library, which he wanted to add as 10D, and also the county manager under B, and I think that's still still business. We'll just put that under B. We just discussed the furniture over there.
Who'd accept the justice?
Second. Motion and second to accept the agenda. All in favor? And all opposed? The girl, what we just did, every time we have an agenda, that's the items that we go over, so we all have to agree that's the things we want to talk about. That makes sense? So if there's anything anybody wants to take off that, or delete, or add to, this is the time we can do that. And so we just did that, added a few items, made our meeting going on, if you know what I mean. But this won't be a six-hour meeting. And now we'll start with the first item, with that being approved. Under reports and presentations, we have the TRU Club presentation. Don Wild Burgess, Macon County Public Health. Thank you. My name's Don Wild Burgess from Macon County Public Health, and I'm here with my coworkers, Becky Barr and Melissa Leatherman, along with you from the Macon County Schools, and a lot of the Girl Scouts left, but they were here also in support of the tobacco-free parks. Some of the girls need to stay with us, so we appreciate that. Our true clubs have been working for several years on tobacco-free issues, and for those of you who are not familiar with the true club, that means Tobacco Reality Unfiltered. We have three clubs in the Macon County Schools. They were involved in the tobacco-free schools and the smoke-free restaurants, bars movement. The tobacco-free parks is also a priority issue of the true club, as well as the other students. This is evidenced as far back as 2008, when they presented to the Macon County Parks and Recreation Board. Since that time, they've been involved in cigarette butt pickups, petitions, and laser supportive tobacco-free parks. Last year, funding was cut for this program, for the teen tobacco program in the state of North Carolina, so we were forced to halt some of those activities at that time. Recently, we were fortunate enough to have been awarded the True Sustainability Grant. This grant focuses strictly on tobacco-free parks. It's a one-time grant made possible by North Carolina's share of the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement that will purchase signage and pay other expenses related to the passage of a tobacco-free park ordinance. The $12,000 received in this grant has to be spent by May 31st, 2012, or it reverts back to the funder. As well as being a priority of the youth of our community, this is also a priority in our state. The evidence of this is a $400,000 per year Community Transformation Grant that we've received from the CDC, which is being implemented over the next five years. To continue to receive these monies, one strategic priority that we're required to achieve is tobacco-free regulations for government grounds, including parks and recreation areas. Macon County is the lead county for this grant, which encompasses eight regions, or, I'm sorry, eight counties in our region. These counties will be looking to us for guidance. As you know, the Surgeon General has stated unequivocally that there is no safe exposure to secondhand smoke, and that there are no safe tobacco products. In talking about parks, we realize that we're talking about outdoor air. If someone is smoking, this also affects non-smokers. In addition to the smoke being a health risk, there's also a danger to children in adjusting cigarette butts or spit tobacco, as well as the issue of litter. Even more importantly is the message we're sending to our children. No one wants children to smoke, so we need to set good examples for them by not using tobacco products. The most recent report by the Surgeon General entitled "Preventing Tobacco Use Among Youth and Young Adults" states that youth identify with peers they see as social leaders, and they may imitate their behavior. It further states that youth are vulnerable to social and environmental influences to use tobacco, and that tobacco use is often portrayed as a social norm. We have the opportunity to change the social norm of the youth of our community. Now is the time for us to present this information to you, not only because of the grant we're receiving, but also as a result of the passing of the tobacco-free restaurants and bars laws. This law allows local governments to adopt policies and ordinances to restrict tobacco use in public places. We're asking that you pass an ordinance for tobacco-free recreation parks in Macon County to protect the youth of our county, to set a good example for them, and to be consistent with the school policy, which is 100% tobacco-free school grounds, hospitals are also 100% tobacco-free, and the Little League rules state that tobacco of all forms is prohibited on fields, benches, and in dugouts. In addition to the youth, we have the unanimous support of the Board of Health and the Macon County Recreation Board, as well as support from the Highlands County Commissioners. These leaders in our community are specifically supporting our request for 100% tobacco-free parks. In 2008, Mr. Adams took the issue before his Recreation Board, and they voted unanimously for tobacco-free parks. All these community leaders did discuss designated areas, and if they wanted to make this recommendation, but they all chose to recommend 100% tobacco-free parks. As an example of our students' involvement, we have two Macon County students tonight that are going to present to you. One, named Z, will read an essay that was submitted in our tobacco-free parks essay contest. The other, Christy, will represent other students and tell how they feel about tobacco-free parks. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and guests. Why we should have tobacco-free parks. Parks are a fun place to go because you can swing, watch ballgames, and go swimming. Parks are a place to have fun, see scenery, and just chill out and enjoy the fresh air. I love parks because I can go down a slide, go on a roller coaster, and take a hike. Hiking is fun because you can watch all different kinds of animals. I like to go kayaking down rivers and lakes and see all the fish. I like smelling the fresh air after it rains at parks. Parks are a place to play, not a place to smoke or chew tobacco products. When I go to the park, I like to play, not smell smoke or have to watch someone chew tobacco. It hurts my lungs when I run through a puff of smoke while playing. Sometimes it even makes me sneeze or cough, which doesn't make it fun to be in a park. The most annoying thing is to avoid stepping on the cigarette butts or seeing them pollute the play areas, walkways, streets, and trails. These butts are harmful to not only children, but to pets and wildlife. Watching someone chew and spit tobacco is not a pleasant sight. It makes me sick to my stomach and gives me a headache. Sitting or stepping where someone has spit tobacco spreads germs, stains my clothes, and is just plain disgusting. The chew tobacco wad is harmful to children and pets, and takes away from the beauty of the wonderful parks. Parks should not be a place where people smoke or chew tobacco products. Smoking can cause fires. Cigarette smoke can pollute the air. It can cause secondhand smoke. It can be hazardous to plants. I think we should have a law that makes them tobacco-free in order to make them safer for children and animals, and a more family-friendly place to go. It doesn't cost us anything to go to the park, but maybe we should start charging those who use those products if we can't have a tobacco-free policy. What people choose to do in their own homes or on their own property is their choice, but don't make me suffer for someone else's poor decision.
Well, good evening, gentlemen. I'm Kristy Sheldon, and I just want to say that my point on the issue, I have some personal points to this, and I want to start out by saying that I have nothing against people that use tobacco products. My entire family has, my whole life. And when my grandfather died when I was eight years old, he died of lung cancer, and he smoked up until the day that he died. And I've wondered since that day, you know, am I going to develop lung cancer because everybody around me chose to smoke? But, you know, it's touching to me that we can make a difference to kids, you know, even if it is the park, you know? Not the whole community goes out to the park to play, but our kids do. You know, my boyfriend has a three-year-old daughter, and she has asthma. You know, I wonder, when she's six years old, you know, is she going to want to play ball and go out to the park and have an asthma attack because somebody's smoking in the dugout, you know, over on the bleachers? And it's, you know, it's scary. And, I don't know, I'm not a very popular person, and, you know, all my friends agree with me when I tell them that, you know, this is an issue, and they all feel the same way. And it's, you know, just again, that I have nothing against it. My whole family has, and it's, you know, it's something, you know, people choose to do on their own time, you know, their own home. But when you're coming out and, you know, trying to enjoy your day, and, you know, there's somebody there smoking or, you know, dipping on the ground, it's, you know, it's not only a hazard to help, but it's money going in, and, you know, where's the money going to something that can't be stopped? But I just want to, you know, say that this is how I feel about it. I have a lot of personal views to it, but I guess that's all I really have to say. I just, you know, hope that this is done, and, you know, it's touching to me, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kristy. Don, back to you.
Any more members have any questions?
Maybe I, I hope everybody called it out. Could you go into a little more detail about a couple of things? The impact, you know, March 31, uh, May 31, not March, but May 31 deadline, and talk to me some more about the $400,000. What did that replace? I think Mr. Ruttner can, I don't know if everybody remembers that or not, but I know we discussed it the other morning. I thought we got it. I got it mixed up. But could you explain the $400,000, what that's replacing in the budget, and why that is such an important part?
As far as the money that needs to be spent as of May 31st, that is the one-time grant, the $12,000 that will pay for all of the implementation of the ordinance, is anything that, you know, needs to be done, the signage, you know, anything that needs to be done for that?
Is that only in support of the tobacco-free parks with that $12,000? There's nothing else tied to that?
Right, and I'll have, and just me and I'll have Becky talk about the CDC grant, but that one $12,000 grant is just for tobacco-free parks.
Okay.
And as of May 31st, if that is not spent, that money goes back to the state, and since the master settlement money was taken legislatively, then we will not be receiving that money.
I think, you have that money now. You have the $12,000, which has to be spent by May 31st.
And if it's not, it reverts back. And it has to be spent on the tobacco-free parks issue.
Right.
Okay. Now, the $400,000 a year grant, Becky can speak, you know, more to that, but basically our health promotion money is what you're going to...
Could you, Becky? I just want to make sure I've got it straight in my head.
Sure.
The grant that Dawn was speaking about is called the Community Transformation Grant, and it came out of the Affordable Care Act, and states apply for the grant on a competitive basis, and North Carolina was one of the states that was lucky enough to receive the money. And the state has chosen to distribute this to regions, and we are Region 10, eight western counties. And it's basically replacing our health promotion money, which we lost this year, and I think Mr. Ruttner has shared that with you. But they have given us strategic priorities that we have to work on with this grant, all eight counties in the west. And actually, every county in the state will be working on them, because the money was given to every region in the state. So the entire state will be working on these 11 priorities. And what Dawn was referring to earlier is one of the priorities, in fact, the second priority, is that we are required to achieve improvements, I'd say, on tobacco-free parks issues.
It's a results-oriented?
Correct. Outcome-based.
Outcome-based.
Yes. Continued funding will depend on positive outcomes for those strategic priorities.
I want to try to... On the $40,000 that you have, do you have a safe working fee for some of the rest of the Girl Scouts who are supporting the work that you're doing with that money?
Yes, sir. When we applied for the grant, we had to supply a budget with that, and then when we were given the grant, the state provided us with an agreement addenda, so we have to adhere to that agreement addenda. And the majority of the money was put in for signage, and we worked with Mr. Adams, talked to Mr. Adams, and also Mr. Chalker and Heinz about what their needs were, what we have to do if an ordinance were passed, and what their needs would be. And a good bit of it was signage. We also put in some money for publicizing the new ordinance and letting the public know about it and what rules would be. So we have that component in there as well.
So you do have that in our copy?
Yes, sir.
I think this is the impact. I'd love to see that, I guess is what, I believe that's what you're getting at, and it'd be nice if you could give us that, as we...
Sure. Be glad to.
Jack, Chester, you guys looked at this?
I looked at proof, though. I'm not sure if you guys ever interviewed this.
I have had a chance to look at it. There are a few questions that I need to take a look into first, that we'll need to determine if they should decide to pass it, because it's police-powered ordinance, you will need to either, A, pass it unanimously on the first reading, otherwise it cannot be passed until the two reasons of the ordinance.
And just a legal question, if this is an ordinance, for that to be carried...
Not on this, you will not. It is a police-power ordinance, which we're not applying to.
I guess the question, I think, Chester, is it is enforceable? I was trying to figure out whether we're going to enforce it, possibly if somebody violates the ordinance.
It's outlined in...
There is one question that I have, and I need to look into that I've not had a chance to look into. Clearly, there are statutory authorities, should the county choose, and there's no smoking. The question I have is, the statutory basis or legal basis for regulating the use of smokeless products, and I'm going to need to look into that. There may well be satisfactory grounds under general police power to do that, but I'm frightened of that.
Questions of Chester, Jack, Ms. Dawn?
I haven't a chance to meet with Mr. Burgess and Barr about, when we sit down and cover this.
Hiking is fun because you can watch all different kinds of animals. I like to go kayaking down rivers and lakes and see all the fish. I like smelling the fresh air after it rains at parks. Parks are a place to play, not a place to smoke or chew tobacco products. When I go to the park, I like to play, not smell smoke or have to watch someone chew tobacco. It hurts my lungs when I run through a puff of smoke while playing. Sometimes it even makes me sneeze or cough, which doesn't make it fun to be in a park. The most annoying thing is to avoid stepping on the cigarette butts or seeing them pollute, deplay areas, walkways, streets, and trails. These butts are harmful to not only children, but to pets and wildlife. Watching someone chew and spit tobacco is not a pleasant sight. It makes me sick to my stomach and gives me a headache. Sitting or stepping where someone has spit tobacco spreads germs, stains my clothes, and is just plain disgusting. The chew tobacco wad is harmful to children and pets and takes away from the beauty of the wonderful parks. Parks should not be a place where people smoke or chew tobacco products. Smoking can cause fires. Cigarette smoke can pollute the air. It can cause secondhand smoke. It can be hazardous to plants. I think we should have a law that makes them tobacco-free in order to make them safer for children and animals and a more family-friendly place to go. It doesn't cost us anything to go to the park, but maybe we should start charging those who use those products if we can't have a tobacco-free policy. What people choose to do in their own homes or on their own property is their choice, but don't make me suffer for someone else's poor decision.
Well, good evening, gentlemen. I'm Kristy Sheldon, and I just want to say that my point on the issue, I have some personal points to this, and I want to start out by saying that I have nothing against people that use tobacco products. My entire family has my whole life. And when my grandfather died when I was eight years old, he died of lung cancer, and he smoked up until the day that he died. And I've wondered since that day, you know, am I going to develop lung cancer because everybody around me chose to smoke? But, you know, it's touching to me that we can make a difference to kids, you know, even if it is the park, you know? Not the whole community goes out to the park to play, but our kids do. You know, my boyfriend has a three-year-old daughter, and she has asthma. You know, I wonder, when she's six years old, you know, is she going to want to play ball and go out to the park and have an asthma attack because somebody's smoking in the dugout, you know, over on the bleachers? And it's, you know, it's scary. And, um, I don't know, I'm not a very popular person, and, you know, all my friends agree with me when I tell them that, you know, this is an issue, and they all feel the same way. And it's, you know, just again, that I have nothing against it. My whole family has, and it's, you know, it's something, you know, people choose to do on their own time, you know, their own home. But when you're coming out and, you know, trying to enjoy your day, and, you know, there's somebody there smoking or, you know, dipping on the ground, it's, you know, it's not only a hazard to help, but it's money going in, and, you know, where's the money going to something that can't be stopped? But I, I just want to, you know, say that this is how I feel about it. I have a lot of personal views to it, but, um, I guess that's all I really have to say. I just, you know, hope that this is done, and, you know, it's touching to me, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kristy. Dawn, back to you. Um, any more members have any questions?
I hope everybody called it out. Could you go into a little more detail about a couple of things? The impact, you know, March thirty-one, uh, May thirty-one, not March, but May thirty-one deadline, and, and talk to me some more about the $400,000. What did that replace? I think Mr. Ruttner can, I don't know if everybody remembers that or not, but, but I know we discussed it the other night. I thought we got it. I get it mixed up. But could you explain the $400,000, what that's replacing in the budget, and why that is such an important part?
As far as the money that needs to be spent as of May thirty-first, that is the one-time grant, the $12,000 that will pay for all of the implementation of the ordinance, is anything that, you know, needs to be done, the signage, you know, anything that needs to be done for that?
Is that only in support of the tobacco-free parks with that $12,000? There's nothing else tied to that?
Right, and I'll have, um, and just me and I'll have Becky talk about the CDC grant, but that one $12,000 grant is just for tobacco-free parks. And as of May thirty-first, if that is not spent, that money goes back to the state. Um, and since the master settlement menu was taken legislatively, then we will not be receiving that money.
I think you have that money now. You have the $12,000, it just has to be spent by May thirty-first.
And if it's not, and it has to be spent on the tobacco-free parks issue. Okay. Now, the $400,000 a year grant, Becky can speak, you know, more to that, but basically our health promotion money is what you're talking about.
Could you, Becky, I just want to make sure I've got it straight in my head.
Sure. The grant that Dawn was speaking about is called the Community Transformation Grant, and it came out of the Affordable Care Act, and states applied for the grant on a competitive basis. And North Carolina was one of the states that was lucky enough to receive the money. And the state has chosen to distribute this to regions, and we are region ten, eight western counties. And it's basically, um, replacing our health promotion money, which we lost this year. And I think Mr. Ruttner has shared that with you. But they have given us strategic priorities that we have to work on with this grant, all eight counties in the west. And actually, every county in the state will be working on them because the money was given to every region in the state. So the entire state will be working on these eleven priorities. And what Dawn was referring to earlier is one of the priorities, in fact, the second priority, is that we are required to achieve improvements, I'd say, on tobacco-free parks issues. So this is something-
It's a results-oriented-
Correct. Outcome-based.
Outcome-based.
Yes. Continued funding will depend on positive outcomes for those strategic priorities.
I want to ask you, on the $40,000 that you have, do you have a safe working figure showing the rest of the state's support for it, and is that what you're doing with that money?
Yes, sir. When we applied for the grant, we had to supply a budget with that. And then when we were given the grant, the state provided us with an agreement addenda. So we have to adhere to that agreement addenda. And, um, the majority of the money was put in for signage, and we've worked with Mr. Adams, talked to Mr. Adams, and also Mr. Chalker and Hyatt about what their needs are, what we have to do if an ordinance were passed, and what their needs would be. And a good bit of it was signage. We also put in some money for publicizing the new ordinance and letting the public know about it and what rules would be. So we have that component in there as well.
So you do have that in your copy?
Yes, sir.
I think this is the impact that we have. I'd love to see that, I guess is what, I believe that's what you're getting at, and it'd be nice if you could give us that, because we-
Sure. Sure. Be glad to.
Jack, Chester, you guys looking at this?
I looked at it through, I'm not sure if you guys heard it, it's a good question.
I have had a chance to look at it. There are a few questions that I need to take a look into first, but we'll need to determine if they should decide to pass it because it's police-powered ordinance. You will need to either, A, pass it unanimously on the first reading, otherwise it cannot be passed until two reasons of the ordinance.
And just a legal question, if this is an ordinance, would that cover the hearing?
Not, not on this, you will not. Uh, it is a police-power ordinance, which would not apply.
Yes, the question, Mr. Chester, is it is enforceable? I was trying to figure out whether it would enforce or possibly found it through somebody who likes the ordinance.
It's outlined in the-
It's outlined in the- There is one question that I have that I need to look into that I've not had a chance to look into. Clearly, there are statutory authorities, should the county choose, as well as smoking. Uh, the question I have is the statutory basis or legal basis for regulating the use of smokeless products. Uh, and I'm going to need to look into that. There may well be satisfactory grounds under general police power to do that, but I frankly don't have a chance.
Questions of Chester, Jack, Ms. Dawn? I haven't a chance to meet with Ms. Burgess and Barbara about, when we sit down and talk about it, and I have the same, you know, there's not, I don't think there's nobody on this board that thinks it's not a, basically, a good idea. We keep our parks clean. When you see these kids and they're telling me, you know, what's, what's good and what's not, they're right. There's no doubt about that. But the only question we have today, we'll be discussing, is about the enforcement issue. And I believe deciding is that, you know, are we going to have the back control? No, that's not going to happen. But would it be a deterrent? Would it be a deterrent and be effective as a deterrent? I think that's two totally different things. Uh, the ordinance is a law, but right, Ms. Turner. And if you want to have it on books, uh, I think most people that come to enjoy our parks, we would hope, we would hear from that, but that, you know, you have a lot of out-of-town folks, I hope you certainly, Lily's one. Lily has some moves about that. Uh, so if there's any concern, I think it's, it would be with me, would be of enforcement. Are we going to use it as enforcement too? And, and Ms. Burgess, please speak to this. We all know that Lake Hennett, other thing to do to be on tobacco patrol, we agreed to that. And, but would it be a deterrent? And do you think it would be a deterrent? And what's, what's the health, what's the opinion on that? And please explain that, that I thought I've done a good job.
No, you did a great job. Um, the general statutes provide enforcement provisions, as you've already discussed, that makes it a violation of a local ordinance. Uh, but we foresee that this is going to be enforced like any other policy of the county. And one thing that we're thinking is that signage is the key. Eighty percent of the population do not use tobacco products. Of the twenty percent that do, we perceive that if they see a sign that says no tobacco products, that the majority are going to adhere to that policy.
If I'm just telling Ms. Burgess, in my opinion, that not more people than them play ball.
What we're, what we're looking at more is that we're wanting this to be the social norm for children, that, that they're going to, you know, not use tobacco products, they're not going to see adults in their lives use tobacco products, and that will become the social norm.
I think if we pass this, my opinion is not to be police people, but just to provide information that we feel like this is bad behavior. And I, I'll think any of the police each other. When I go back to school, I know we did that '05, '04? When was that? Do you remember? It's been, say, maybe a year. That's sure, yes, it's been, yeah.
It can, it can be, in that respect. It can be.
But again, the reality of it is, I think about things like football games where, you know, I suspect if people use tobacco, that might be where it would be, or a baseball game or something. I don't think anybody goes around and check people's pockets and that kind of thing, go back. I think that would be ridiculous.
But what you're looking at, also, as Ms. Barbara referred, all of the counties are going to be working towards this. So this, this is going to be, you know, coming up in every county. So I think that everybody's not going to come to make a county thinking, oh, there's tobacco free, and then where else is not, you know? So, you know, they're going to be looking, it's going to be a norm. All of the parks are going to be tobacco-free, and they're just going to not open.
Okay. Any other questions? Jack?
We have been looking at that. There's, um, the list changes daily, so there's not a really good, I'll say, updated list. Um, Durham County, um, in their minutes from where they were passing a tobacco-free, uh, parks law, did include some, led to, um, Swain County, Graham County, Marion, which is McValley County, Haywood County as tobacco-free. So, wouldn't provide you with those also, but, uh, they're, like, all of the state, all of the counties are going to be giving the CDC money. All of us are going to be working towards, um, the tobacco-free parks. So, you know, they may just not have fit on the records that they're tobacco-free, but we've been in contact with them.
She said Swain, Graham, and Haywood.
That is the reference that was made in Durham County. Yes. We're working with the Tobacco Free, uh, Tobacco Protection Control Branch on getting those policies.
Just to make perfect clear, another thing we talked about when we met, which management was that this would encompass, would be said the park everybody next to the red one, but also encompassing the green one. New Orleans County on property board, the red page activity, correct? Am I correct in that?
I think, I think that's the way, that's what the resolution was, any county property that's a market red page.
Yeah. And I'm going to recommend that you more clearly identify those parts, because, you know, in order to enforce the people's standpoint, it has got to be abundantly clear to the public where, where the law, the current, that would occur.
So, now, Wesley's bar, again, you, you must specify, you might be, or otherwise you get into some deep problems. So, just remind me, Ms. Burgess, of the timeline again, this board?
May thirty-first, we have to have the money spent, so-
Can you have it here, Mark? This has to be spent. Check out, be ready. Even the warrant pieces, to my business, work done with camp, was that?
I think there is a little bit of work that needs to be done, and, you know, it's not law. I do need to look into the issue of, him, uh, regulating, uh, smokeless use. Clearly, we've got authority from the state legislature as to smoking. We're just going to need to look into the, the help we need to regulate the smokeless standpoint, and search for many good reasons not to use those products.
We, we admit this is a, I've never been here before, so, you know, I think we'd let Chester have had it for time, but we need to have access, kind of your time to talk back with him, so.
Make sure I understand their timetable. You, you have to purchase this, and then you will, you will, be reimbursed? Is that the way that works?
They have, they have the money. They have the money now, they have, they have the money. You have to stand it. They have to write a check.
What is the date?
Make sure they're ready.
Yeah, I, I think the key is to have what you need ready to be discussed at the regional meeting, um, everybody, the all official, and support for that. Well, this is that sort of time that it gets passed, and, you know, but it's not, you still have the opportunity to make a second reading and make, and still make that decision.
And so you don't have the contact, how to get in touch with Ms. Barbara and Ms. Burgess? I don't know that you have the, you're only part of the action, so if Perry does a chance to get in there, then- I think just, with lack of, for lack of a motion, I think I'll just table this and go get. Still, turn next, so we can turn next regularly, skip a lead on your fifth little problem. I'd like to say this, though. I'm all in favor of that, sure. But even though that money that you got, and I turn it to right, that's tax money. I'm concerned with taxes, that's why I can't even stay. I'd like to take a look. What you're asking for is just, that's federal money. You make sure that's federal money. Sorry. There's still tax money. I just want to look at it, as, as, I don't smoke, I don't use tobacco, and I got kids. So, that's, 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 that's-
That, that, it's not really tax money, you know?
No. It's back to, uh, back to-
Back to sale.
It's back to sale, uh, back to tax money. All right. Well, thank you, uh-
Thank you so much.
Dawn, thank you girls.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's not easy to talk, that's how I've done it, it's not fun. Well done, both of you.
Were you nervous?
Well, actually, I did it at the Board of Hall, and honestly, I did so much better. I don't know what it is, you guys in suits, but you guys intimidated me.
Oh, come on.
I was, I was pretty emotional, but-
Mr. Chairman.
Well, you're, you're very welcome to be here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, uh, any of you guys that, that were here for that, if you want to stick around, that's fine. I'm sure you're going to enjoy the rest of our meeting, but if you need to go, if you'd like to go, feel free.
Thank you all, gentlemen. Thank you very much, ladies. We've already taken care of the Girl Scout proclamation. Uh, HC is the plan of work for 2012. Mr. Allen Burden, Macon County Cooperative Extension Director, Mr. Burden, welcome. Glad to hear you. We'll turn the microphone over to you. Burden?
Well, gentlemen and ladies, first, let me thank you for giving us the time to talk to you tonight, and also thank you for your support of working on Cooperative Extension in Macon County. We do appreciate it. About this time of year, we are finishing up with our plan of work for the new year, and we are finishing up with our program impact report, which is the report on the impacts that we made in Macon County over the past year. And so we combined that in one report, and I'll give you that tonight for you to look over as you'd like to, and keep it, please, and see what Cooperative Extension has done in Macon County. Cooperative Extension is a partnership between USDA, North Carolina State University, and Macon County Government. And we really appreciate, uh, what Macon County Government does for us, and we understand what great partners we have in Macon County. So we're, we're just very pleased to be able to operate here in Macon County and work with you on issues that are significant to Macon County. We have a number of different programs in Macon County that we work on, and I just want to highlight some of the things we've done in the last year, just to let you know what the money's been spent on. In 4H, and we have some 4Hers here with us tonight that are going to talk to you a little bit more in detail about what they've done. In 4H, this past year, we started a Macon County Youth Council. Uh, you'll meet some members of that Youth Council tonight. At your meeting last year in March, we asked for your permission to begin working on an archery range, which was part of our target sports program, and we've made significant progress on that, and we'd like to talk to you a little bit about that. 4H also has started this year a robotics club. Uh, they have a lamp club, which will be meeting soon, getting their lamps and preparing lamps for the show with Macon County Fair in the fall. Uh, we have a horse club, recently worked with FFA in the high school to have a horse bowling team, maybe we could do a horse bowling. We have numerous opportunities in 4H for public speaking and presentation, and it's a, it's a leadership-building program, and I think we should, people tonight, will show you, or will demonstrate what our, our program is about in a way. We've been fortunate here tonight to see a number of different groups of young people, the Girl Scouts, and, and this is, for them, this is the beginning of developing leadership skills and becoming leaders of the future, and that's what 4H is all about and a real part of our program. We also have Family and Consumer Science. Uh, yet, Family and Consumer Science, even today, we were completing a serve-safe program, which teaches the local food service providers in Macon County how to safely prepare the meals for, uh, the people here in Macon County. When you go out to eat, probably somebody in that restaurant has had our serve-safe course, and that just teaches them how to prepare your food safely, so it makes it a safer place for you to eat. We have candy and food preservation programs that also become real important in an economy that's maybe not as, as good as some of us would like it to be, but, uh, we're teaching people how to preserve foods on their own and maybe stretch their food dollar a little bit more. We also have candy classes, and we continue to expand, uh, the Extension and Community Association. It's a, a group of women that are there for social interaction, for community projects, and also as volunteers for extension. In extension, we have, uh, we depend on our volunteers a great deal. Uh, we have a lot of volunteer service. We wouldn't be able to function as we do without our volunteers, so we really appreciate it. We have, uh, two expanded food and nutrition education program assistants. That's a program called FTEP, and we have one young lady that works with our youth in Macon County partners with the schools. Uh, we have an adult, uh, FTEP assistant. She works with our health department. And the WIC program, they teach safe food preparation, and they also teach nutrition education, how to stretch a food dollar. So those are things that we're having to do. As far as our agriculture program goes, uh, we are working again, our third year with Community Garden. We support the Franklin Telgate Market Association with several meetings per year. We support Macon County Beankeepers, uh, the Beankeepers meeting right now with the extension of the diesel for this year. Uh, we also provide pesticide recertification classes, pesticide applicators or licenses in North Carolina. They have to be, have hours of recertification or to keep their license, and we provide that training for them. We also hold pesticide licensing PIS, so that they don't have to go out of town to Asheville or other places to be able to get their license. Uh, we'll be holding a pesticide disposal day this year. This is something we really like to do. We're glad to have it come around. In the past, uh, ten years, at each of our pesticide disposal days, we have dealt with over the 1,300 and 2,000 pounds of unwanted pesticides exposed to the property. Those pesticides that won't be going into the landfill in black plastic bags, that'll be emptied up on ground, are buried in the backyard, so that's a program that we, we're really proud of. Uh, we also have ag options grants that we help folks apply for and get in Macon County that we've been forcing in the last few years, and have several $6,000 grants awarded in Macon County. We also do regular classes in vegetable gardening, uh, and, uh, blueberry production, and shiitake production, uh, and any, anything that we can do to help support agriculture and build new agriculture in Macon County. Some of the other things, just brief highlights that we have achieved in Cooperative Extension. Staff members in Macon County Cooperative Extension conducted or participated in 316 meetings, workshops, demonstrations, lectures, and tours in the delivery of educational information to citizens of Macon County. Uh, 1,702 hours of classroom time at law. Uh, we do a lot of education, and that's what Cooperative Extension is, as an educational organization. More than 5,800 people attended educational programs by Cooperative Extension, and Cooperative Extension first of all had over 12,000 face-to-face contacts, uh, in the latest year. Macon County Cooperative Extension also received, uh, $4,940 from supporters in monetary and material donations, uh, and we are continuing to work with, uh, a $19,000 grant from the Cherries Preservation Foundation, uh, which you'll hear a little bit more about. And those are just some of the highlights that we try and capture as much as we can so that people in the county know what the money is being spent for. Uh, and again, we appreciate what you, uh, what you do for Cooperative Extension, the support that you show us. And right now, what I'd like to do, with your permission, is to, first, I'll take any questions if I have our extension probably.
Can I just want to comment, Mr. Burgess? As liaison to the Extension, uh, we're blessed, so blessed to have, not only the faculty staff at our Extension service, they do so many things that most people may cannot be doing. Not to mention a huge garden here in there that takes a, quite a bit of time, but, um, local grown food, there was a program that came out, it's been two years old now, about local food. And you read the report, you'll see the numbers, and you know how local food, uh, has grown and the production has grown, has to help get markets to grow. Uh, we all are given a growing up, we, you know, the honor stands, and, like you see, you can see this in the report, that it's really coming back from everywhere. Now, do you just comment on that, what you see with the local food production and the sale?
And I will ask that too. I know the history of this, and from what I understand, Cooperative Extension, as I understand, it grew out of NC State.
That's correct.
Back in, in 19-
The early 1990s, around 1926.
I was going to say, early, early 1990s, and there was a Cooperative Extension in every county in North Carolina, which is cooperating between county and state and NC State.
That's correct.
Back in that day, we were, especially here, we were very much a farming society. Uh, I know my parents have been, have gone, still is, but people made a living, they fed themselves on. It went through a period where that, that really also went away, but it was very much diminished. Uh, and follow up on my running question, do you, do you see that as a, a trend that we can help come back as people get in the rhythm, basically, maybe, or income, I know cattle with the advent of the, the center, I guess it's can right there?
Right, it would be can.
What do you see as trends in, in agriculture? Where do you see us going?
What we see in Macon County right now, uh, is our largest growth area is in small production, probably under three acres, and some of it smaller than that. There are what we used to call truck garden, and those folks go out, some of them produce a lot of food for themselves, they have a really large garden, but they produce eggs- but they produce hicks, and so they want to do something with it. And we have some folks that will barter, but we have a lot of folks that will go to the tailgate market. They need a place.
Selling.
And selling. And, and the tailgate market over the past, I think we started working tailgaters in 2002, so it's about 10 years old now, and it's in a second location. We have probably around 40 to 50 paid members of the Tailgate Market Association. Usually on market, they look at 25 vendors, and will probably have several thousand customers that come through. We benefit as a downtown plus our small grower. The training agriculture, though, is small, and it tends to be less input, more organic. People like to know where their food comes from. They like to look at the person that grew their food right in the eye and know who they're dealing with. And that goes also with animal production, as well as vegetable, worse than animal production growing in Macon County. We have a young man that started, is sort of producing hogs. He's planting hogs for Macon County Fair now, but also for other people that would like to purchase pork on the hoof, and fresh pork from Macon County. There's a big interest in poultry. And, and I knew a lot of backyard, a lot of backyard chicken growers in Macon County. But we were approached before Christmas by a young man who saw that there was a need for an organization to bring those people together, so we helped. Over the last four months, began the Macon County Poultry Club, which will be meeting next week with them. They've been working hard on their bylaws and developing leadership skills. But that'll be another educational organization that will be sharing information with one another on raising poultry the correct way. But agriculture tends to be small. I wouldn't tell you that we could, that our small producers in Macon County could $20,000 in Macon County if suddenly a fence went up around Macon County and we had to depend on those producers. But they keep that skill alive, and they are part of it, and they, they're just another part of the food industry.
And we discussed in our board retreat in January, that certainly one of our focuses this year is going to be on the economy and whether the big things that we do or the small things that we do, make it all work, so the economy can take, have a long way out. Very slow coming back, still slow coming back, and that's true here, so we need to do whatever we can do to help folks. And then, with agriculture, one thing that we talk about is encouraging people to help figure out what families can do. Selling those products, poultry, beef cattle, and bringing them to Macon County.
Exactly. Programs like this won't lift Macon County and the high school and county in the state by anything. But it's just, it's a little bit, and it's not a great thing to be against, but it's just a little bit. Help them, that's what the folks who need it, a little bit, and if you use the skills in a market like the tailgate market. Tailgate market has been a great thing in Macon County and downtown. Thank you very much again for your support. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our 4H leader. We've seen a lot of great young people here tonight, representing a lot of young people's organizations. And I'd like to introduce Kathy Coleman. She is the leader of our youth organization, 4H in North Carolina.
Thank you. Good evening. I bring greetings from Macon County 4H, a community of young people ages five to 18, learning leadership, citizenship, and life skills. As the 4H motto indicates, to make the best better, we have a group with us tonight who will share what they are doing to fulfill that motto. Rest assured that our future is intact with youth such as these, who truly care about their fellow citizens, our beautiful county and country, and who are destined to become our future leaders. Yes, Macon County is blessed to have them, as they are finding out leadership does not happen overnight. But it is rather a process that is learned through positive experiences and education, which North Carolina Cooperative Extension provides. Now, county commissioners deal with many challenges in their time of service, as do most administrators in positions of decision-making. They normally hear about things that are wrong with the system or things that need to be changed. Tonight, our hope is to report to you the positive things that have occurred as a result of this commission's decision a year ago, to empower our youth to make a difference in the community. We will hear reports from Savannah Bruin, Casey England, and Jacqueline Bruin, who are officers of the Cherokee Preservation Foundation Youth Council. Thank you for believing in the youth who hold our future. They will make you proud. So, I would call all of them to him up right now, and I would like to introduce to you Savannah Bruin, who is the president of the Youth Council.
Welcome Savannah.
Hello.
I think we've seen you before.
Yes, sir.
And it was Savannah and Casey and...
Jacqueline. Jacqueline.
Hello, from the Cherokee Preservation Foundation Youth Council. So, Macon County 4H wrote and received a $20,000 grant from the Cherokee Preservation Foundation in November of 2010, and we developed a Youth Council to promote leadership by doing things that benefit the youth in our community. And we do those things as we continue to remember and honor the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, the source of our grant. Our Youth Council attended the Cherokee Forum Leading to Change at Fontana last March to learn techniques to, in team building and leadership development. We had the opportunity to team up with the four other Western Carolinas of youth and the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, who are all working on Cherokee gardens. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of our members of the Cherokee Preservation Foundation Youth Council. Members, please stand up. They can be recognized by their Youth Council T-shirts. Just got this. And, please do that. As members age out, graduate, or move on, we add new members through an application, uh, application process, selected by the current membership. We've recently gained some new folks as people have graduated or on graduation. So, five of us, the older members, attended an etiquette class at the Eastern Band of Cherokee Reservation, taught by a Western Carolina University professor. This information will be useful in interview situations and will help us to know what is proper dining protocol. One of our members, the young teacher, attended 4H Citizen North Carolina Focus, a capital experience in Raleigh last June. His experience focused on civic engagement and a greater understanding of our government. I participated in the 2011 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Summit, Youth Voice, last August in Concord.
And we found you in the grass.
Yes, sir. Youth Voice brought over 75 teenagers to the NCAACC conference from across the state. We took the top 10 issues facing the youth in North Carolina, based on a survey completed by 4H the previous year, and pursued solutions. This summer, two youth from the Youth Council will be selected to attend the Commissioners Conference again, and they will have the opportunity to work with you at the conference and during the year to pursue more solutions to our concerns. Leadership training comes in many forms. The etiquette class, games, trip to Raleigh, and my visit with y'all at the Youth Conference, or Commissioners Conference. And leadership and citizenship is what we, the Macon County Preservation Foundation Youth Council, is all about. Now, may I present to you Casey England, our vice president.
Casey, welcome.
And thank you Savannah. We not only receive training in leadership and citizenship, as Savannah was talking to you about, but we take it to another level by implementing 4H's summer relief programs. And those classes are for youth ages five to 18, and are age-appropriate, educational level one. Last year, some of our Youth Council members actually led or assisted with some of these classes. And this year, I'm personally looking forward to helping with one of these classes and teaching it with Jacqueline. So, that's going to be great. I also, last spring, was interviewed by Gordy Mercer, the newly established Cherokee Preservation Foundation Youth Council. And this was the first time I'd ever been on the radio, and I really enjoyed it. So, we wanted to share that with you guys. We are currently planning to install a Cherokee wheel garden at South Macon Elementary School this spring, and we're looking forward to the completion of this project soon. I'm also fixing to begin working with the high school administration on furthering their recycling program. Our council, its plan is to purchase recycling bins with grant funds, and they will be placed at local events like the football games, basketball games, like that. And they'll be for bottles and pans, so that those cans and bottles that are normally thrown away will have a chance to go somewhere else instead of into our landfill. Our intent is to link the life of our current landfill, and I encourage people to recycle not only just the students, but also for our community. That's all I have to share with you, and thank you for the opportunity. And right now, I'd like to present Jacqueline Bruin, treasurer of our council.
Thank you, Savannah.
Thank you Casey. I save the best for last. We want to thank you for permission to access county land near the Agricultural Services Center and trust us to develop an archery range for kids to enjoy. Without this land, our archery range wouldn't have been possible. The official groundbreaking began in June, on June 27th. I'm pleased to report the excavation of the archery range is complete. We have made plans for the following: hydroseed grass to reserve the slopes, build permanent targets, build a safety fence, and purchase additional archery equipment. We are close to exhausting our current grant funds, and plans are in the works to apply for the additional grant monies from the Cherokee Preservation Foundation and also the NRA. We currently have over 30 youth in the 4H archery program and the growing interest as the word spreads. Our certified archery instructors include Carol Pitts, 4H Program Assistant, and Bob Williams, a Mountain View teacher. We are continuing to look for more volunteers to assist with our shooting sports program. If any of the commissioners are interested, we will make arrangements for you to get a 4H volunteer form just in time for the April 4H Shooting Sports Certification Training in LRB in Carolina. Thank you so much for continuing to believe in the youth of this county through your support. We invite any and all suggestions or recommendations for future projects that you, the commissioners, see would benefit the youth and citizens of Macon County. We appreciate all you've done for the Cooperative Extension of Macon County 4H and the Cherokee Preservation Foundation Youth Council. We are willing and able to make a difference. We believe if it is to be, then it is up to me. Thank you.
Sharon, let me just say, as a member of the board director of Cherokee Preservation Foundation, make no mistake about it, the Youth Council is led by Macon County. There, we spent two days last week. I wouldn't go ahead and apply for that. But we're very proud of these, of these folks. The Youth Council, we celebrate 10 years, Thursday night, the Cherokee Preservation Foundation. I'm the newest member, appointed by the governor to represent the commissioners of this end of the state. So, it's been an enlightening experience for the Youth Council. You read about in what they've done and the leadership in Macon County. And so, I can tell you, the other members on that board are very proud of the Youth Council. I want y'all doing, y'all gonna make it great, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Just to say thank to Savannah, Casey, and Jacqueline for speaking tonight, and to the rest of you guys for being here. What a wonderful organization. I was a 4Her once upon a time.
Had been that long.
Be nice now.
It was, it was a bit of a hype.
But, you know, and I think I speak for everybody on this board, we're so encouraged by them people in our county, and we'll do anything we can do within reason to help you guys, like with the archery program that we've helped with and anything else. We're just proud of what you're doing, proud of 4H and Allen, the Extension service. Feel free to come to us. I think we're open to suggestions of ways we can partner in, as we said, help the economy. I think that's, we have obligation to do everything we can, even if it's small. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And as always, if you see that we've been our scope in Macon County, please don't hesitate to go.
You can be excused if you'd like to. We're slowing down the crowd.
I'll go this way.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Alden, I can't hear you. Thank you for representing us in Raleigh. You're going to Shelly State, I know where you're going.
No, we're not. I know we're not going there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tate, you had commented. What did you want?
Good news. Out of number eight, Dee, the, we have USDA Summer Food Service Program, Christian Nix, Macon County Republican for Congress. Welcome.
Good evening. How are you? I'm here to speak to you briefly about the summer food program. I don't know if you know about the summer food program or not, but the summer food program is a USDA-funded program that provides meals to hungry children during the summer months. Meaning that during the school year, children who receive free and reduced lunch, when they go home in the summertime, they don't, they don't have access to that anymore. I want to give you just some information about it. During 2011, nearly 760,000 children in North Carolina was eligible to receive these free meals. However, only 12 out of every 100 of them were served those meals. In 2011, Macon Program for Progress decided that they would utilize this program. And so, what they did, what we did, is we applied for a grant and got the money to do this. And our program served 4,577 meals between June the 20th to August the 3rd, which is not too many meals. It's for children between ages of one and 18 years of age. They are all eligible to receive these meals. There's no income guidelines, none whatsoever. And I'm here tonight to just ask for community support, meaning to help me get the word out that these meals are free and that children have access to them. And do y'all have any questions? Because that's kind of my spiel. The thing to remember is Macon Program for Progress is a nonprofit organization. We receive no money. We've applied for the grant, and we get a certain amount, we have a budget. And like last year, our budget was like $14,000, and we went over the budget by $4,000, and we ate that cost. So, nothing, no one's out any money. And basically, what we did last year is we went door to door, kind of, and we gave meals out to kids. And we had several childcare facilities and camps, decided to use this program. And so, we were able to give the meals to them, but we didn't have a lot of talk in the community about it. So, let's go over here and ask for community support.
And Mr. Chairman, when we started the program, we officially tell you, we didn't have a clue how it would go.
Exactly.
And we started surprisingly very well, considering the time everybody had. This year, I think the board has worked hard to try to make it come out in the community and things we want to work with. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cooper, especially with the red car, to have a central place. Now, the rules of this, Christian, you can define this a little bit better. You literally have to hand the, hand the food to the child. You can't give it to the parent to give it to the child.
Right. This, this program is not, this program is not for parents, it's for the children. Last year, we used Macon, Franklin High School as a central location, which was great, because we had summer school there, and we had the van there and stuff. So, what happened is, I had my cooks, who had already prepared the meals, drive there. And what they did is, they were able to hand the meals out. I had two volunteers who actually handed the meals out and counted the meals. Whatever meals, if we took a hungry meals and only gave out 50, we only got reimbursed for 50 of those meals. So, that's how we took a loss on that.
And remind us to start date on that, with June 2?
Last year, it was June 3rd to August, August, it was June 20th of last year to August the 3rd. But this year, it'll be on June the 6th. It'll run from June 6th until August, until the first day of school, basically.
What we'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if we can, is to have Seth sit down with Ms. Nix, and like the large shelter down there, I think we can get a central distribution point like that. And he would be like from 11:30 to 12:30, and he would basically make the dispersing.
This is a, this is a lunch.
Yeah, this is a lunch. We could do three meals a day, but because we're just kind of, this is our second year, we're not only going to do lunch. But basically, we would send like 500 meals down there, and we would have, hopefully, some volunteers where we wouldn't have utilized our staff, and they would give the meals out and count them. But any child that came up would get a free meal. And it's a balanced meal. It's like a meat, a grain, fruit, a vegetable, and milk. And it's, we use fresh vegetables where it's a balanced nutritious meal.
With that, I mean, very partially, the empty people does get, you got to remember, remember, Kenny, we're seeing this on backpacks for the three-year-old Friday, with every child, with their backpacks.
There's four hundred and some children in Macon County that's receiving backpacks, a hundred and seventy of those children come from Macon Program for Progress. Macon Program for Progress, if you don't know, serves children that are six weeks to five years of age. And I talk to parents every day and they need that food on Friday. So we do have a hunger problem in Macon County, whether people believe it or not.
We got this coming up, boy.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris. We had E, Ronnie's going to give us a NACO brief.
Yeah, real brief, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things that NACO, people might not be aware of, but on, of course, you went to NACO conference and most of the topics were, folks in legislature about some problems we foresee in some of the budget cuts. But just to give you a little idea of what NACO does for Macon County, through its prescription discount card program today, the citizens of Macon County have saved over three hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's one item. And then on the PIL program, which is basically, you know, forty-six percent of Macon County is federal lands, which has got a hundred and forty-one thousand acres, and that's the reimbursement we get back from the federal government. We talked earlier, they said, you know, that's on the chopping block. So we're funding through September, I believe, we talked with Hope to us. But NACO is basically lobbying for the counties, especially for far west counties, western counties, including Macon County, for substantial pieces of property grown by the federal government. We didn't hear the word "sell the federal lands," we heard that word. We certainly, I think there's more to be opposed to that. But I'd just like to mention that through the PIL program in 2011, we got returned three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And if that goes away, that's three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, which means we must plug something. So if you're in that, you know, basically, if you don't take the SRS program, maybe I'd actually do so.
SRS program. So you're still changing the policy for navigation plans for education. And it actually was a benefit, the board mentioned, and I agree to go ahead and support that change. And most of the money they give to us is going to sell timber primarily on far service land, and that money comes back, twenty-five percent proceeds can still come back to the county, but that's distributed to most of the people for education. About three or four years ago, maybe three and a half years ago now, that program was changed and it was increased, an increased amount of money we were able to, to pass through to the school. And the superintendent's been working on this very much and working with people in the region because that actually, that program, that new reimbursement expired last fall and NACO and Macon County was working to get that reauthorized. So with that money, it feels like, like, it's just a lot of profit here, it's federal land, you don't get any tax money, although you get a little bit of income, bill taxes off of it. And that helps a great deal, especially in far western counties, forty-six percent of Macon County is federal land, Macon County's almost ninety percent, almost ninety percent is federal land. So they have very little tax code to work with, same kind of needs. But those are some issues that NACO, of course, the state has some of, some of the issues that they were, that they were working on too. And.
Well, some of the things we talked to about our legislative body was, of course, our tenant money and separate assistance for needy families, that's about three hundred thousand dollars for Macon County, what that pays for the three basic items. It pays for child protective services, subsidy to childcare, and our work first program. As an electric county, which there are seven of us now left in Macon County, with great leadership from our Subsystem Service Department, they can use that three hundred thousand dollars a little bit more in different ways to better serve the citizens of Macon County. But with that money going away, if it does go away, that's going to be a big, this county cannot plug all those holes, Mr. Chairman.
And that break jobs Jane, Jane Kim, Jane Kim, she does with her, it's amazing, I'm blessed to be on the liaison to that board and it's amazing what we've been as an electric county to say. And do you feel like you're working?
Well, if, you know, the daycare situation, we still, we're still battling that situation. But the remote sales tax collection, this is for internet sales, it's, we lose about a hundred and twenty-two million dollars annually in North Carolina, some of that's contributed to Macon. So we did talk about that with our legislative body. Not sure what kind of response we got off of that, but we did talk to them about it. What we mostly talked about is if the federal government, we have candidates at our present hands, everybody else says we want to pass it down to the states, that's fine. But if they go and cut the money, then you can cut the mandate to the candidates. And that's where it'll end up at.
And they don't, don't cut the budget, I just pushed it down to the candidates.
That's right. If you want to cut the money, cut, don't make them.
Cut the mandate, took the program in.
So, and that was some of the things we discussed. So we just wanted to let the folks know that for our five hundred and sixty-two dollars annual dues, we think we're getting a pretty good payback for what they're doing for Macon County. So that's just a short report, okay?
Under old business, we did talk last month about the upgrades, the nine-one-one call center and the budget amendment, of course, along with that. Just to reiterate, I think the board had enough questions about it that we felt like we needed to table that and, you know, get some answers to those questions. Mr. Tate, I had the opportunity to meet with David, I think, and so we hope we had provided opportunity for that. So we'd ask him to put that back on the agenda for tonight. So, Mr. Tate, I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Brown.
We got an outstanding lead, two very places to go, and I'm glad to please, I can answer a lot of their questions. The process, we actually still in. So again, I feel much better about it than what's going to happen. I see the tide's here tonight, so I think one of the things that came out of it, and Todd, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the low bidder on this is the same company that we've been using, that they can sort of fortune.
A little bit, yes, on the CAD. It is a sunken, we've been using for almost twenty years. And we are pleased with our service. We went through a rough, a rough period, they weren't doing real well with their service work, but they have come back before they needed to be. We did use this as an opportunity to look at other vendors, other providers to do the same thing. But we did find anybody that could do anything better than what we worked on. Went over history, went on and played with it, and that was, that's the.
The same thing with Widdley, with the voiceover.
Right, with the radio console, the backbone of that system is virtually the same backbone of the system we're using now. A lot more bells and whistles, technology's come a long way since we bought that old radio system, but the backbone of all of it is basically the same.
So Todd, just to sort of go back over, this is for the, yeah, just a minute, Todd. You know, I'm never speaking French. About that big, we've been printing. This is for the computer aided dispatch, what you call the CAD, right? And the geographic information system, and the upgrade, let's see, all this, the force over the internet protocol. Just in layman's terms, and we know you work for this every day, but just for the public and everybody, what exactly will this be doing as far as providing better public safety? How are you better on the other side of this installation process?
The, the biggest thing is just the technology. The redundancy that's been with this system is something we've never had before. We will now, when this is complete, have a true backup center. We do have, have had a partial backup center downstairs, but in the past few years, we have robbed parts and pieces off of that to keep our existing system going. But the redundancy that this allows us is something that we've never had before.
And how, how is this system in hand now? I know it's probably different, Joe.
Yeah, the, we went E-nine-one-one in nineteen ninety-four, if I'm not mistaken. The latest upgrade, the latest major upgrade we have was nineteen ninety-nine. We have had some updates to our software, we have had some user-end upgrades on our radio console stuff, the basic stuff is getting there, so it's nice to learn.
I might mention to you, Mr. Chairman, I feel, I know that you're a bit on board with this, I'm very, I'm very excited, and I'd like to give you a second to, or they were, communications system, it's been, I don't want to scare anybody, but it's been really improved over the past year, and we keep it operating, had a good out health level, had to build a backup, like Todd said, had a lot of fun parts for that old system. And so every day that the system works, as it's supposed to, we feel we gain something in this system. We had hoped to try to get it replaced last year, but since that one's gone away, so it's critical. The bad thing about it, I guess, given that the board proves contract, the support system will take us four to six months to get the equipment in, so we're still costing our fingers and our clothes in hoping that the system continues to work like it's supposed to to get the new system installed. And I'd just say, whether or not we upgraded the facility where the system is going, the system would have been replaced anyway. And this is critical, because without the communications and our emergency services can never really, in my, we changed that years of experience, and it would probably be more about, but this is a very critical part of our whole process.
Speaking of, Mr. Horton, it's, it's a, I had come to the point where we have taken our, basically it's our mobile command post, and we have stationed it at our building, at our old board space, because we know the next time it goes down, it may not come back up. And that's going to put us working outside of the trade of the, temporarily, because as soon as we can get some things in the process, we've been told in, we're in two months on some things, to six months on others. So even if we get this approved tonight, we're still looking at six months out.
It's true, we keep our public safety, and I think everybody out there, it's not important to you down there.
Right. And communication's been one of the most important jobs, nobody pays attention to you, they'll, they'll need your attention some of them, the wear and the hub, the fire in as well, it all starts with that nine-one-one call.
Chairman, Commissioner, as you are considering the bid proposal for the boy system as well as the responses to the request for proposals on the CAD, it is important to note that the CAD system was put out for a request, pursuant to a request of proposals as opposed to an advertising deal. And when that was done, the county utilized provision of General Statute one point three dash one twenty-nine point eight that authorizes matters other than simply price to be considered in the acquisition of CAD system. That statute requires that the county put perspective providers of proposals on notice as to what would be considered, that was advertised and put in the bid specifications. And by understanding, Mr. Segal, in consultation with Mr. Key, have evaluated those proposals that were in response, and they are of the opinion that the proposal of interactive public safety is the best overall proposal received. They have the expertise to go over all of that technical specification, and by understanding, Mr. Segal was pleased with that proposal, is that correct?
That is correct.
Indeed, is it your opinion that it is the best overall proposal received by the county?
Yes, and it's also a low bid.
It just happens to also be a low bid.
And the thing we've got in there, this is an existing company that we're using, basically what was quoted us was an upgrade to their system. So the other systems that were quoted can do the same thing now, but they are completely brand-new system. We're operating, the company that we're using now is called Interact, just showing how far behind we are, the version we're using is five point eight point seven. They came and demoed for us the other day, their version ten, the Interact version ten.
So it's time.
It's time. And, and it's an upgrade, that's the reason, the main reason they can get careful of it.
The point of that discussion is to bring to this board attention that the board needs to determine that the proposal of interactive public safety is indeed the best overall proposal received for awarding to Interact if that is the case.
I would look to Mr. Tate, he had the interview and you reviewed our thing, Mr. Tate, and we look to you for that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is it okay, can we clear all the designs out of the link? Based on, and also based on Mr. James' comments there, I'd like to award to Interact Public Safety an amount of hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents to the CAD and GIS systems, the nine-one-one call center. The second is the award of bid to the voiceover internet protocol, radio console system for Widdley's Communications, an amount of two hundred eighty thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars. And third out is budgeting related to that.
I may just interject, I assume implied in his motion is the required finding that these interactive public safety.
If he states that.
That's correct, and that's what I started out my, my early comments on was doing.
Not only the T-cause, but it was also the one that we reasoned out, so it makes them
feel confident and comfortable with what they're doing.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tate. We have a second, by Commissioner Tate. And that motion, just for clarification, that does include the bids and the budget amendment to fund, is that correct, Lord, so we can do all that in one, one motion?
Mr. Chairman, probably ought to, if you have this up, you say the numbers probably won't come up exactly what that is, because there are two other items that are included after part of this project. One of them is the upgrade for the telephone company in order to make the system work and the other is to, uh, some furniture that goes along with that. So the budget amendment includes both those items, thus the actual purchase. So, so you know that, that's the reason the numbers on these items.
And Lord, do you want to remind the board about where the money come from?
Yes, this money is, we're seeing on a monthly basis, funds from the nine-one-one board. So these funds are, have to be, you know, specifically spent on purchases. We have sent both of these quotes to the nine-one-one board. They was not here to hide, but from what I've gathered, the majority of this is nine-one-one element, and if it's not, we still have some about fifty percent of what safety need, and that we can apply for the difference. But basically, there's no general money involved, we've got a corporation, general fund, it's all kind of the nine-one-one fund.
We, we did.
Chance to offer to keep your other things, so getting out of town, but you get up to that budget, the nine-one-one board approved our backup plan.
Right, I was going to say, we, we did meet with the representative of the state nine-one-one board last week, and we did present our plan to him and he has approved.
As we all know, now the town's feeling, now they're looking at them.
I have a meeting, I got a meeting, neighborhood council board.
They got their own. All right, any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm going to leave you, I got one question. I've read the fifteen things, and I looked at them, is the upgrade of the needs, is the upgrade of an extent training would be required? Because I don't see it in the fifteen little things listed there. I remember back, the last thing I looked at, that's what tripped me off last time, was that one guy said they were going to train us, one guy said they weren't. Is their training included and is it even necessary? I'm not going to say I'm smart enough to know.
Along, along with our remodel, our teachers already have our new system up and running, along with our current system downstairs. That's going to provide us the time for Interact, yes, they are going to.
So Interact is going to.
They are going to come. They are going to come and train us. I don't know how much is going to be required, uh, it's a different version.
Well, I didn't even know whether you could do it in-house, or whether you even need their interaction, I'm just.
For the CAD, it is all in-house, I believe for the radio console, uh, there is a provision in there to send a nine one one communication technicians, um, to the company at some point during the build. So they can bring our techs up to speed on how to maintain and, and do minor repairs on the radio system.
My concern is, Dr. You guys over at that former line, we were forever buying systems and forgetting to ask about the training and then having a big tab at the end saying, okay, now you gotta train us.
I think that's why I think the training was part of the bid specification right now.
Okay, okay.
And so in order to contract, if you want to prove this major, the contract will basically refer to the bid specs that you find along the bid actually.
Just want to make sure we did that, I mean, I hate to, I hate to get caught, I hate to get caught at the end and then say, oh, wait, we forgot, you want the training? You know, I've been down that road, it's not a fun thing to explain when you get caught up in that, so I'm just trying to head it on.
There, there won't be a big transition from most of the old, but Interact is sure as the table type area.
That was one of the pros of using that most of the time, about the familiarity with the employees running around.
I just had to ask a question, another conversation.
Yes, question. Mr. Horton, did, um, Mr. Key provide to you the contract document on the CAD program?
I don't have it with me. Uh, you mean the, the, the contract to go ahead and order the contract? I, no, I don't, I don't think I have that, I'm not sure, I'm in the office a lot, but, uh, the contract document we're going to have to have is going to basically, for your review, it's going to have to refer specifically back to all the specifications in the proposal, the bid documents.
I think ultimately, that, that is, uh, that, that document does need to be. And I think it.
Was that documented?
I think he has, I think Mr. Key has that document, I'm not going to have to state it. And it is, it's, we looked at, I think at your office.
You're looking at my office?
Now, I'm not sure, but, uh, in any event, that, that does need to be.
We have to be in documents here, but you're talking about the.
It, it, when you use the request proposal, your decision is awarding the contract. And I think, I think you can go ahead and authorize, Mr. Horton, to, uh, sign the contract consistent with the presentation.
Consist with the agreement.
No, we don't have to put it on another month, every now and then, oh, that's what I worry about.
No, that's fine.
But I do think it's appropriate, the language, uh, specifically on board, you know, manager, Interact, Interact contract, consistent with what's going on.
We, I mean, you got that part of your motion, repeat that place, Lord, I'll motion.
It is to include the authority, uh, to be given to county manager to execute, uh, or first award and to execute the contract, uh, consistent with the specifications and, uh, the presentation provided to officials and for the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars.
You accept that motion? You, is that good, okay? With that being understood, any other discussion regarding to the motion? All in favor of motion, signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll try to get that right away.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Segal. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we've been meeting now in thirty-three minutes, does anyone desire a little stretch of break here?
I think we look like one kind of core day in the holiday. Todd, I just want to say, I'm really excited about trying to be centered there, and I'll just go right to the end of it. Any of you gentlemen that can spare fifteen minutes, if you run down there, seen the working conditions that they've been in for the past twenty-plus years, to, uh, where they made it to now, along with this new equipment, it's just, it's really amazing, uh, I'm really proud, uh, of what's going on down there. People have worked there for more years, uh, working the top, and it's, it's really, I don't know if you guys see it.
Can I just add to that one thing that happened this past week? A gentleman had a heart attack in front of my store. At ten twenty, it happened to my store. Got a call back from his son at twelve twenty, he had two stunts, two stents in his heart and was doing great. And that was because of the work at EMS and the nine one one system, the decision was made, all that ambulance, take that patient straight to the helicopter by the paramedics that's involved by Mike Cannon, that he's such a wonderful job, owes his history, what they could, and they evaluated, right on that, I was taking a flash of the helicopter, the ashtray, and was in the room at twelve twenty, two stents in his heart, doing great. And any other circumstances, it probably wouldn't happen, so that don't make you proud of things that were worked in EMS and some of our county employees, they clean down, we're going to make sure. That's why I told them that.
I don't want to mention the name of that family, we all know who it comes out, but, uh, very good friend of mine, I happen to be with some family, and I heard that phone call, it was, uh, to have Ronnie's stories, my colleagues, get out there and see what you can do to help, so, and he did. But it, it was, it was a good example, that family wanted me to express to you guys how, how pleased they were.
And it's done in my car, that's why, you know, I was happy to be there that night, or Kevin had to be a part of it. But we, we had happened every night, and so, uh, so it's appreciated.
How many, how many calls have I ever been?
Right now, coming out of winter, uh, we're looking at about seventy to eighty calls a day, uh, can't count for focus. Uh, and some of that will go up to one to fifty.
Two fifty a day?
Hundred fifty, can't.
Hundred fifty a day. Okay, do you have anything else on that? Will the standing recess for ten fifteen minutes? Next down on our agenda is the, uh, discussion regarding, uh, concerning legislation about the water testing for private.
Are you, 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 was that what, you, you business?
Good, you do, we're arguing, you can get requests on that.
I had it wrong place, I had the Hudson, I probably.
So it's, uh, pending, we'll get to it. Uh, about the drinking water for private wells, uh, I'm asking Chester to give us a, I think we've, uh, we've had this discussion to some degree, but if Chester will give us a brief overview about what this is, and then we will proceed.
Gentlemen, it's my understanding that, uh, in times past, um, testing for DOCs on new well, uh, new wells had been left to the discretion of the local health department, and they would basically look at a site and determine whether or not there were features present which would suggest the need to do that type of testing. Subsequent to that, the, uh, state currently implemented some new rules, which basically said, if you've got a new well, uh, you're going to have testing for DOC. And Ronnie, you jump in and tell me if I'm wrong on any of that.
That's, that's.
But, um, basically, the, uh, the state made that decision, if you're going to test for those DOCs, whether there's anything on the site suggested that there might be a problem with that or not. Uh, the resulting effect is, is there's a belief that that cost, uh, is, will run the cost ultimately of the well up by roughly two hundred and thirty dollars, I believe is the number. In any event, uh, I think the thought was, is, uh, it's very important to have that testing when it's, uh, when it's necessary to have it and when the site suggests that there is a need to have it. And certainly, I don't think there's anybody on this board that would want to put any necessary testing, but at the same time, I think this board is concerned about, uh, ultimate cost to the consumer of wells and doing testing, which may, in some situations, prove not to really be of great help and indeed not really even, uh, potentially not even warranted. And so as a result, I was asked to put together a proposed resolution, um, in support of this board and each member signing a letter to the Legislative Delegation of Jim Davis and Roger West, basically requesting that, uh, the legislature revisit that new rule and determine whether or not, in fact, it is really necessary to have testing in every case, uh, and to give consideration to whether or not, going back to the old rule, whereby a local, uh, health department employee would evaluate the site and determine whether or not there were circumstances present, which suggested that you could test it for DOCs. And if there was, then of course, you would have those tests. If there were not circumstances suggesting that, uh, the need for that test, then, um, I think the thought would be, let's explore whether or not we could exempt or not require testing in those circumstances. So that's, uh, that's what the resolution is designed to do, and the letter, as you see, it was attached to the resolution, is a letter requesting that, um, that the legislature, uh, require testing, uh, for volatile organic compounds, uh, only when indicated, and that responsibility is of the local health department to ensure appropriate testing that could, uh, rather than simply requiring anything.
Just reminder, uh, Mr. Chairman, this, of course, came, uh, this is for the Department of Commerce, associated with the county commissioner. And it's due, it's, in the past, you know, mine had had a trigger date, uh, coming to effect. I have spoken with the Senator Davis, uh, if he's willing to bring this up in the short session. If you remember, gentlemen, the state does not even have adequate means to test, now have to do the test. Which means that a license to perform a drug or the subject, Mr. Craig, you shared mine, who, by the way, uh, under his jurisdiction, I'm afraid you haven't speak to it. He's already bound by his obligation for his license to do this. So what it would mean is that, you know, if you're out of the county, you would have to have this test though. There was much talk about the cost of the test, Mr. Jones, who would we get to do that here?
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that.
And neither did I.
The indication is that statewide, these tests would, uh, be roughly three point six million dollars a year.
And this, bottom line, this is just, I've talked to Mr. Craig about this before I would be telling this, but we have talked about it. It, it's another regulation that just adds costs to business, and, and, and we need to get rid of things like that. And I think we're all for proper regulation, that kind of thing, things that make sense. But this is one, this is another level, you're, if you're looking over the shoulder, looking over the shoulder, looking over the shoulder, and that's it. And I would like to hear what, don't even say it, Fred, say what.
Well, that's about all I can say, you know, I mean, I have forty-five years of drilling, uh, I think no need anymore. How many, how many of these mountain tops you want to find that have that system? We're not in Raleigh, in the low, brown, tenses, you know, and we, we know where to do well, where not to do well. The service stations, John Myers have a leaking problem, we got monitor holes there, we know it, you know. And you could go through all that, if you go back up there to Ronnie's house, or to your house, or to Ronnie Hayes' house, it's useless. I mean, it's another burden for the taxpayers to have to take care of, you know, to go through all that.
And Mr. Craig, isn't it true that if you do come out to a place like my store somewhere in the real well, that you can tell the customer this, you may have to have a tester because there was a site?
Well, ain't many places in Lake County where they made a hole.
Yep.
And the surrounding counties, and out of all of them that were made, we've never had one, yet it was still different in this county. So, you know, that's pretty good track record.
If you look, if you had two hundred and thirty dollars to cuss, I'd be able to win.
Well, it'll start at two hundred and thirty dollars, but it winds up, both of them wind up.
If you find somebody to do it.
The most of the place that we, we found, probably us that could do these tests and, and.
Atlanta that can do Atlanta, but that test is not.
We've been talking, we've been talking to well program as long as I've been on the board, I know. And, and, uh, it, it's, it's hard enough to deal with that part of it. If you, if you go and lay this on top of it, uh, it just is not necessary in every case, it just, it's just.
We're going to drive the people away from that county.
Well, yeah, this is statewide, this is statewide. But I think, I think. But Jim, I do think it can carry a lot of weight, when, when, after we signed this thing, we're sending to every county in the state, uh, which we, which we plan on doing. And I think that, uh, Senator, uh, with the Senator trying to get through the short session, uh, I think that's what she says.
I'm pointing what?
I have a question, was it, has it not been implemented yet, you said October two thousand nine, that you're saying?
No, it's, it's triggered to go in, I think it, is it September of twelve?
Uh, I don't really know exactly what day.
It's, they postponed the trigger date, I don't have that paper with me. We're, we're trying to get rid of this sort of.
Yeah, so what, their turn, they're saying it's September two thousand twelve?
Don't quote me on that, Kim, I'm not, I've got the paper in the office, I don't have it with me, but it is, it does have, I would just say, I would just say later.
It was supposed to be implemented in October two thousand nine.
Yeah.
But what you're saying is delayed.
Yeah, because the state have no way to test it, and they still don't have a way, but now it triggers, now it triggers up again. And they said it's going to be implemented, it might be in two thousand thirteen, but it's, it's just one of the things we need to cut off the papers.
I'm, I'm sensing we have some consensus about this enough, you seem like you're comfortable making a motion with it.
I would certainly make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, uh, uh, pass the, the, uh, the resolution to make category, category which concerns the testing of wells volatile organic compounds that align, uh, and submitted by our county attorney.
I'd ask each of you gentlemen before leaving to sign this letter, and we'll get it off with that.
Motion, Mr. Fields, second to the right. Uh, you've heard the motion, um, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of motion, signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. The motion passes. We've been pretty successful, Fred, lobbying these folks.
Well, we're going to watch on a couple.
Have a listen to us, you know.
They're going to do a lot of money that law. Dustin does have a policy, you know, they need to watch out, they got to watch out for them.
Ultimately, the consent rate is.
That's right.
Old, if it comes down.
We can present it on the.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, B, uh, very quickly, I think all of you received, uh, copy letters about the, uh, Hughes Ave and Hughes.
Hughes Ave.
Oh, whatever you call them. But basically, I think we all understand, the, the, uh, school board is requesting that simply put in an application for these funds. Uh, that does, that certainly means they would be approved or, or that we would agree to it at that point. We're not, I'll clarify that we're not obligated to make this point. Back at Dan, it was near my school, school, well, tenure, I believe it was back in two thousand, I want to say it was two thousand and five, that we used the Hughes Ave money, at East Franklin, it's, it's money you can get either at little or no interest.
Hughes Ave is no interest.
No interest at all. So what we did at that time, was we looked at things that we were going to consider capital outlay needs that were coming up, and we sort of put those together, these Franklin, and we used that Tony interest free money and, uh, and did all the work. So that, that's a little background, but Dan's come to us and been asking us to make those.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to jump in front of that. This is an outcome of our joint liaison meeting that we had several weeks ago. Just prior to that joint liaison meeting, Mr. Horton and I both received a fax, I think it was a fax, to each county manager and county superintendent regarding a surplus in Q S C D funds called high school construction bond funds. A school construction bond, you can build new schools or expand footprints, there's a surplus of approximately twelve point five million of unplanned or undistributed funds sitting in raw, that they were sending to someone to try to access these funds and utilize them. So after a brief discussion, Mr. Horton agreed to put it on the joint liaison meeting agenda for discussion. There are some priorities that exist in our school system that if we were to use these funds, it would prevent us from having a capital outlet, budgetary, uh, need, at little to no interest. In addition to the Q S C D funds, I inquired the D P I regarding how many people will probably apply and what our chances of people funding following our request. I was also told that there was approximately sixty million dollars undesignated money sitting in the Hughes Ave college. So I had a brief conversation with Mr. Horton, and we decided to go ahead and we can raise our hands in class and get in line for the lunch line ahead of everybody else. That's basically what we're doing, is asking to get in line and how our handle that is. As you alluded to earlier, it does not commit the county board, the school board, to utilize these funds. It just puts us in line to see if we could access them through this application and resolution process. That is the wishes of the board to have a partnership and report to the community to utilize them.
It doesn't guarantee you're going to get them, it just guarantees you're going to be in line, just the part, or you may get some, part of the line, but you're going to be in line, you're going to get in. The other, the other thing that, uh, that I found important to, uh, makers is, uh, under the Q S C D, the construction bonds, you know, we did the all well members too. We ended up really, had interest rate of point four eight percent. You know, we did the all well members, we ended up, we had interest rate of 1.48 percent. There are different bonds, if you had the bonds that were sold around that, I think the same place, the QZAP. If you had those bonds that were sold around that, then interest rate would be zero.
So some of that's based on the lender and some of it's based on the credit rating of the account, if I'm correct.
That's it, but it's basically, uh, you pay the whole interest rate and, uh, then the feds have to buy it in. And then their buying out is actually, it pays up all the interest rates to our net interest rate would be zero. Uh, you got to pay it to get reimbursed, and that's what we're doing now with this, with this.
What's the discussion, and Mr. Chairman, you concerned, that you were at the meeting, that the liaison committee, which consists of chairman and myself, committee of the schools, uh, that we would certainly, and Mr. Chairman, you said, I would certainly ask your support if we had to apply for these funds. You can make application, and for some reason, we don't need them, uh, all well and good, but we don't know unless we apply. And with the interest rate and, uh, you know, we're looking at some furniture things, we'd have to, the things we're looking at, we can show them. I would just ask that Mr. Chairman, you concerned, to speak to that.
I agree, and what's, the beauty of this is, when I first heard about them years ago, I thought, that can't, that can't be right. But, uh, it's, it's a good way, if, if you have capital needs that you know you're going to have, they, we've not talked about this. If you have capital needs you know you're going to do, you know you have to put a roof home, you know you have to do these certain renovations, like we did in these Franklin. You, you can put that in budget and do it a little bit at a time, or you can utilize these funds and do it, and basically have a no interest situation, which is, I would say, free money, but you still have to pay back the money. But if you're, you would be paying it out of your capital outlay, basically, you might try. So it's, uh, if, if it was, you know, talking about five percent interest, then, no, you know, certainly, or less likely to.
Mr. Chairman, did I ever get the timeline nailed down? That, I mean, that was sort of left when we met, when nobody really.
The timeline.
Sixteen.
The sixteen.
All of the things got to be in by the postmark by the sixteen tomorrow.
Okay, that's all we noticed, well.
QZAB is open, there is no.
The one that was packed, yes, sir.
QSCV is packed, and that's, of course, the four projects, QZAB is for the Highlands.
Amy, you have to make a question.
I do, I do absolutely agree, I mean, we got to get mine, and I'm also that. I just, out of, out of curiosity, I think I understand what's going on at Union. Could you be, is it, or have you, do you have any specifics on what you're going to do at the middle school, high school, and that?
Well, yes, sir. At the high school, it will require air conditioning replacements to focus on R twenty-two discontinuation.
There it is.
That's with more, from a little kid's standpoint.
No, that's fine, that's, that's, that's the level of detail I need, I don't. How about that, I have.
Nanahaila windows, exterior windows, that got eliminated from that original renovation.
Oh, that's right, okay, 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 and middle school?
Middle school would be the R twenty-two replacement, store garden units and.
Restroom?
Restroom, restroom and cafeteria.
Alaska, what do you mean, that's Highland School?
Highland School, Highland School is a pretty, pretty extensive job, it's going to take some engineering and architectural work. Do basically what we did at East Franklin, do the same thing in the elementary wing, do some roof replacements. It's pretty serious over there.
Okay, fair enough, oh, yeah, I know, we're trying to adjust that.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Caden, second, by Commissioner, uh. Covers.
No, I'm going to be a wall, but, you know, you're, hey, don't fire me here. Hopefully crap's not even making.
And just to clarify, the, gentlemen, the, the, uh, motion second is to, uh, is to make application for, while driving school, to make application for approval for these funds. And then, understanding we would, we would have to come back at some future time and take action to actually utilize the funds and set that up.
It was a huge, uh, if we.
All right, any, uh, any discussion regarding the motion? All right, all in favor, signature, I would say aye.
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 Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate your support.
And you'll, you'll have to hurry and get that.
Long warning.
That's why we're working on, and, you know, we did all the, during our liaison meeting, we did, we do, time.
And we're very fortunate to be positioned as a county to constantly reach out to city, so thank you for your management.
Do you realize our credit rating is higher than the federal government's?
And that is.
Pointing that out, it is, it's serious, Fred, it is.
Hard to do with.
They good stuff, Lord, did we just get that great, or?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I were on school jack one to discuss the furniture.
We, uh, Terry Bell, of course, our, our family ran through all the school projects, and we're getting on this kind of, we're getting, you know, budget decisions and bids together, so furniture can do all of that, I think, for school. And, uh, we're trying to find a way to, to pay for that system, it was my pleasure, it's one part of the great construction project. We do, we are unfortunate to have some of that still left over, and we have a real school construction project. And, uh, that was a project that was built with, uh, standard financing, a strong purchase contract for BBNT. We have talked to, uh, our representative at BBNT, and he's, he said he would allow us to take the leftover funds from the five, six, and create a school in France, and for this pension, and for this school project, for the, uh, uh, Valley Elementary School. So we think, uh, we need a letter from him to do that, and we need to bring a budget number back for you all, but, I mean, our capital projects are in order, but in the meantime, we need to order furniture. Uh, the good news is that we think that between the money we have left over from the five, six, to the limit, if we have some, if we have some, we can tend to see them there on the Island School, they'll still be in good shape. But what we need to do is ask you all for permission to go ahead and allow us to do that, and authorize Terry Bell to go ahead and solicit bids for the furniture, because it's going to take ninety days, uh, to get the furniture installed, uh, delivered. And, uh, it's going to run pretty close to the finishing up time for the new school, so for the length of, the board will do is give us authorization to go ahead and, uh, based on the triple bank, right, for those five, six, two project, for the Olive Valley Elementary School project, and set the budget number, you all will approve in April, and authorize Terry Bell to go ahead and solicit bids for the furniture for the new school.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, this is basically what we had discussed earlier, I mean, that, again, you know, we, I think of myself that, that, especially the county manager, for his, uh, finding things that sometimes grow the looks, which is one of the times. So I would like to make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, to go ahead and authorize the county manager to proceed with, uh, to exchange the money, uh, to give, uh, Mr. Bell and, when I have a fire for our furniture.
Motion second, Mr. Beal. And just point out that there's no new money here.
No new appropriation from the county, it's always already there. And in, in the, in the spirit of full disclosure, I'd give credit for our financial director, she helped me find some of that money there so that we could, we didn't have to go back and try to ask for budget amendments and appropriations and so forth, so, uh, I commend, uh, Ms. Hall for doing a good job on our financial end, we have just, uh, on all our resources, and so have the.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Preparation from the county.
All right. We have any, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, signature, I would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion, that's, yeah.
By the way, just, just, uh, for the record, Mr. Chairman, for the board members sake, the, uh, the latest, uh, project schedule we got for the Alstoria Water Sur is a contractor, completely finished with this stuff by the eighteen later. So we're, we're watching them every day, and, uh.
We're holding them.
And we're, uh, we're, 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 we're hoping, hopefully, Eddie will meet that schedule, and our general contractor will certainly get all his work done, because our goal, too, depending on what degree, is not to have those kids spend another year in those places down in California.
It's a look, the name of goal is testing.
And just, I don't know if somebody said it tonight, but the goal is to open that school up in office.
Absolutely.
That's, that's, everybody's working for that. When we met the other day, uh, I believe we were on schedule for, for July, it looked like, when?
July one is what we heard, to get the keys.
That's right.
July nine?
No.
July nine.
July nine.
I tell you, there's a lot of people up in California that really hope for that.
Remember, that's, well, you, you, I've been through it, you, you can open up mid-year, we did that with, uh, we did that with Park and Jay, because it took longer than they did, than they all meant. But, uh, that's, that's not a desirable situation. You didn't start the school year, you know, chain bus routes in the middle of the year, you got to eat in the Kenburger country where they go to school, which is not, we appreciate the, the good job you got to keep this on track.
Well, thank you very much for having this furniture as well, it was a big difference.
If you have, very content.
Thank you very much.
You can go home, be a fan of it, it's for you to stay with you.
Now, you need to stay and hear this next, next report.
This, this, I'll, for once, I'll agree, Mr. Beal. If you would, ten seat.
Gentlemen, and, uh, and, and, both present, you know, the board gets to do things, everyone's allowed to recognize special folks in our community. A lot of the times, ladies, these folks have, have, are no longer with us, such as Oscar Edwards, in, uh, out of SEC campus, so Branson Barry Billings. Tonight, gentlemen, I'd like to bring to you something that we have discussed individually with you all, uh, and that's the naming of our senior services and resource center. I'd like to put before the board tonight that we've named that center in honor of, and with thanks to Dorothy, Dorothy R. Crawford and John L. Crawford of Macon County. Uh, for those of you who don't know, Dorothy Rose Crawford has spent a lifetime helping families and children in Macon County. She's retired from DSS, she's a young ninety-three now, still very active in the mental health sector in Macon County, very active in WARP, John drives her to Raleigh. Uh, and it, the reason for both of them is there because it has been a team effort. Dorothy would be the first one to tell you that. Uh, so gentlemen, I, I would ask this board to support the naming of, of our senior services and resource centers of the Dorothy R. and John L. Crawford, uh, center, and that, we ask that, will that objection take place at two o'clock on May the twenty-seventh? I think you.
That's a motion, I'd be honored to make that motion.
You got it, make a motion, you second?
I second.
That thing, no wonder it deserves an import.
Absolutely. I mean, generally yours, I mean, for those of us who've been around Dorothy all of our life, or, or Mr. Johnny, the woman that, I mean, this, you talk about the devoted life that given to families in Macon County, and still having a deal, do you?
And her, her level of, uh, of enthusiasm, her vigor, uh, I can't see diminished a lot.
I was serving as chairman of the Health and Insurance Committee in Raleigh, when I'd say Frank's.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She'll, she'll call my house sometimes, and she'll say, Kevin, Dorothy Crawford, give me a call.
What are you doing? She's, you call. And lots, lots of chairman is not paying me that. Chairman's like mother, uh, was very close to, to Dorothy Crawford, there was an employee of Dorothy Crawford, and, and, uh, a little very close, I didn't want to say that was the chairman, but I know the hat.
She would be, yeah, she would be happy.
Just one quick, Mr. Chairman, I saw Morbin John Crawford celebrated, their seventieth anniversary, actually, yesterday. They got a celebration this weekend, but they were married seventy years as of March twelfth.
So we certainly want everybody's ire, and the media will certainly help us get the word out. Uh, there will be several special guests, uh, we hope a lot of our legislative body, uh, federal and state are, are present. You will see a lot of folks, anybody connected with ARP will, uh, I think we're, we're done.
Services, senior, darn it, whatever, slasher, you, everything you're dealing with, senior services and.
We'll try to set a little, uh, area up there.
Oh, yeah.
We hope it's, if it's pretty weather, we'll be outside in, not going to be eating. Okay, any other discussion up there, we can, we can. No, no, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And obviously, this is going to be in the papers for that whole, I don't know.
Oh, I didn't know, well, I'd never do that, but, you know, we did.
You know, I'll tell you what, we're so proud of Jane Hinn, she did a great job, and we're, uh.
That's, uh, you're mental, you're.
We've had, uh, we've, we've been really fortunate, there was, uh, Ms. Brady, who was director there for five years. It was a brief period, but she had Dorothy Crawford there for most of thirty years, and then now Jane's been there twenty-five, I guess, so.
Oh, I don't quite that one, but, um, I'm sure Brady was there for more than five years, she took over one more.
Dorothy retired.
She was the two's director, and I gave her work in eighty-five, and when I left, I, I, I do still, I'm a director, so, maybe not a year, two after maybe.
Six or seven years, yeah. The point being.
But, but, but you're right, Jane's been there since then.
In a, in a sixty-year period of time, we had three grand. And Dorothy Crawford created, I don't know, that's what you got to give her then. Okay, so thank you, thank you. All right, that's, uh, then, Commissioner Tate, just want to talk to us about the Hudson Library Security Fire Alarm System.
Uh, gentlemen, I think if you remember our last meeting, when you received a letter from Mr. Bell, sticking up, even before he was placed on the library board, to upgrade the, uh, security fire alarm system at Hudson Library. Uh, at that point, he only had one bid, so I asked him to go back and get a couple of work, and get some advice from, uh, bar marshal and building inspection office, to make sure we're up to speed and follow their recommendations as well. Well, he has since gotten that, and again, I apologize, I just received these, uh, yesterday afternoon, first time I got a chance, so I didn't get a hold of them, so I'll put them on the table today, so, uh, if we table this issue, and you have a chance to see it, that is great with me. But, uh, just to bring you up to speed, if I'm not mistaken, uh, I believe our last system was installed in eighty-four, not at the time of the TRS eighty, not the time of that, live that. So that just gives you, uh, an idea of, uh, how dilapidated that system is, and it's, the other, the other system is it's a manual fire system versus a monitored automatic. Uh, it, it's important to the, the people of Highlands, it's important to Hudson Library, knowing safety issues, with the protection of their assets in the library. And so, uh, I recommend that we consider, uh, two items, uh, from my discussion with, uh, Mr. Horton, is, uh, maybe work on your budget for next year, or maybe kind of see our funds, and, uh, handle maybe for some additional, if there, if there, if there needs to be a good cause to, to look into.
And just to add to Commissioner Tate's discussion, of what he said, you got to remember, it's also, uh, the county's best substantial investigation, that's library activity, and so it's not only protect, you know, just while they are, it protects the county's investment, and the partnership between the state and the library.
Okay, appreciate it, Commissioner Tate's research on that, and I think we're certainly, I'll, I'll support it, but, you'll come back to this.
We'll go back next time.
We'll have to do that, the board's going to fix that, actually, I'm sure it'll authorize us to do that. Uh, if we can do it in this year's budget before the end of the year, we'd like to go ahead and do that. If not, I'd like to grant the basis of the program next year's budget, but we'll know a little bit better when we get into court for the year, I would ask you, anyway, so.
See, you think you make that.
I bet, that may be possible.
It, it looks like the, the load bill is, uh, custom tenant security for just under twelve thousand, and they're, they're looking at, I'm sure the library will do up in their budget at about a thirty dollar a month, roughly. Say thirty-five dollars for a monitoring.
I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to make a motion. We authorized the county manager to investigate, the best way to authorize the, the, the fund, the, uh, bid for.
Just maybe that. Custom tenant security. For that, I think, Mr. Mayor, I've only got, with this package that I got from you yesterday, and we had two of the bids in it, and I think there's, there was a bid given to us last time, too, this is from, I'm talking to my dad, I don't have it, I think it's around sixteen, uh, roughly.
No, it was, it was put down in three different sections, one for just fire, one for just security, one for fire insecurity. It was just a little bit confusing, and, uh, it seemed like the other one for fire insecurity was, or, the estimate was, uh, a hundred thousand dollars.
That's the initial.
Again, I don't think there's, of course, there's a rush, as soon as I say the May runs, we'll have a fire tomorrow.
This is important, too, we need to review the proposals, and make sure we got sufficient, think it's better.
Then, especially with the apples and apples, it's, uh, I don't know, it's, but it's.
Have you made a voting decision?
The problem with the system up there now is, especially on, especially on the fire alarm system, it's a little, so. But if someone's there at three o'clock in the morning, they have a good chance the alarm system won't work, so we've got to work on that, but, you know, if you don't do it, we'll have to go ahead, I know that works, too.
We have motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion, hey, so Chester, here's your letter for the, uh, law company, for, uh, all, uh, operations, signed by all members of the, uh...
Uh, that was it, under due business, uh, we've been here a while, gentlemen, we're trying to finish up this second, item eleven's the consent agenda, we can enact this with one motion, no separate discussion, be held unless a member wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, I'll just read through it, that includes amendments in the February fourteenth and February twenty-eighth meetings, budget amendments, uh, we already approved the budget amendment for the nine-one-one, all right, so we can have those, so, yeah.
That was second, we have three of the amendments considered.
So, we have...
Those are all additional plus, too.
And then, we have, uh, package releases, and those items were all included in the package that you reviewed ahead of time, so, if anybody needs to pull the item out of that, or do that? All right, any, uh, any questions about the consent agenda or motion will be in order to approve?
Motion approved.
Beadle and Haynes, uh, any discussion? All the favors signify, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Motion. That motion passes, uh, we do have one, one quick item, Ron.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have been asked, if you know, we did ask the public and with the help of the media, the, for people about the dialysis center, you know, the fifteenth is, is when we, uh, after tomorrow, we turn in our letters and, and all the stuff our certificate and meet, we've been working on, uh, actually putting out in the, in the media, uh, and I thank them very much, I think we received a total, this is just from stage four patients, not, these people, these patients are not the ones, they're, they're under dialysis, but these are Maconians, they more than likely will have to have liver, total renal failure, they'll have to have dialysis in the near future. Uh, I believe I, I believe I've sent off, I believe it was seventeen letters so far, just from the stage four folks. And along with that, gentlemen, I, I would ask that, this is a letter, uh, I know we passed a resolution, this is a letter to go to Mr. Craig Smith, who's the chief, uh, person with certificate of need section, Raleigh, I'd like to include this letter to him by, by email, and I will overnight, uh, this tomorrow to him, uh, Macon County Board of County Commissioners, and working here at the Dialysis Center in Macon County, located by fifty, because the citizens of Macon County who are needed to House of Services, by the way, gentlemen, we received six letters from, from Florida, we got a second home here, so we'll face no same problem, that's, some things we did, we really, when we got, we got this started, we didn't know. We desire for our citizens, other citizens in Macon County to have safer access to the House of Services by having Dialysis Center located in Macon County, uh, the board of county commissioners, standing with any incorporated, they're operating a total renal care in North Carolina LLC, is submitting the shift to need application to state North Carolina, develop a new Dialysis Center in Franklin, the board will like, would like to strongly encourage the shift to need app, to approve this application to develop a Dialysis Center in Franklin, North Carolina. The board's effect request that you receive this letter supporting the total renal care of North Carolina, uh, for a Dialysis Center located in Macon County, certificate of need application to develop a new Dialysis Center, uh, in Macon County, so thank you for your consideration, that's suggested, then, gentlemen, uh, I would ask that, if anybody had any questions, I'll sort of try to answer, but I'd ask that we can sign this letter, we will overnight it, and I will email it to them, I think, together, but, uh, I didn't, does anybody have any question? Between myself, and I'd like to also thank, uh, our attorney, Mr. Jones, we, uh, for all his work on this project, uh, it's not been, uh, so we can jump through the hoops, we're gonna get there.
Commissioner, I really appreciate your time.
Sure, very much.
Thanks a lot, my man, we've had a lot of time, we've...
Okay, gentlemen, I guess we'll be, if we're signing this as a proof, we need to put this in the minutes, if we're going to do this, so...
So, I would like to make the moment to the chairman that we submit this letter to Mr. Craig Smith, who's the chief of certificate of need section of Division of Health and Service Regulation, uh, state of North Carolina, in support of the Dialysis Center, uh, certificate of need for Dialysis Center in Macon County, North Carolina.
Got, got a motion and a second, you have the discussion. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
That motion passes. There's the letter.
So, you need, definitely just keep, you need the copy of it, I, I buy it.
We, we should get a copy of it.
You don't have to, don't make it. I need to mail the original, so, this is the original, I think.
And it ought to be faxed or emailed, or...
Oh, it will be.
The, uh, next item, gentlemen, is the, uh, under appointments, we do have, uh, according to the document that's patched, we have, uh, five people eligible for reappointment, uh, to the, uh, board of equalization review, that, Jack, did we, did we receive other applications?
No, we, we actually, we had one person, I think, who served on last year, we asked him if we could consider this year, and so, uh, Mr. Braxton, Mr. Vincent, Mr. Martin, which is five, he served on it last year, Mr. Bob Zellner would be a new addition to that, uh, the person we have was from Iowa, and, uh, we're looking for somebody else from Iowa, who has knowledge really set up there, and, uh, so, we de-justed it, Mr. Zellner, we consider, he was adding, I think, we're just thinking, we've spoken with him, and, uh, and he would be a good addition to that board, at least for just one year appointment, so you have to deal with each year, uh, so, from year to year, you may have differences on that, but, uh, and it's, it's very, very, you're very fortunate, the county is able to have a quality of people, no real estate values to serve on that, because some of you have served last year, I hope to be able to serve on that capacity, and it's, uh, it's, uh, need to have some knowledge of real estate, real estate values, if you're looking at deals for tax values, that's a, but, uh...
And I'm more than happy.
The, um, the recommendation is, uh, from the fact that, sir, the board considered one, one of, uh, of these four currently serving members, and all of which we want, uh, for, for this, for this year's re, uh, equalization report.
Commissioner Tate, you spoke to Mr. Zellner, he's...
I have, yeah.
I do have to motion, too, my...
Four and five. Second. We have a motion and a second. Get that, that...
Yes, sir.
Any, any discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion. That motion passes. Gentlemen, that's all I have, was honor of agenda coming before the board accept the closed session, and, uh, we require, we don't have no reports.
The, uh, chairman, the, where is the county attorney to host the, uh, city county meeting?
Yes.
So, we have, we've got a lot of time to do that during the next, uh, episode, so, we'll make this, we, we did that, uh, a lot of time, a lot of hours.
Gentlemen, if everybody's got a calendar, we'll see who can... We're March the thirteenth, don't we, we typically do this on the, uh, numbers, March the thirteenth, the twenty-ninth is good, no, it's not, the... The twelve?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
When is Easter? It's reminded, gentlemen, you'll be in last one the eleventh, so, uh, we're not really good with the twelve, we got a candidate's form, Mr. Peppers, and Mr. Niner, myself.
He is, was kissing, I thought he was, oh, he's seven, oh, he is, okay. All right, those are nineteen, we want to stand there. Sorry, there.
I think it's, uh, the, the natural, we are teens. That's kind of weird.
At work.
What kind of reasons?
We'll be at dinner, maybe.
Is that thirty?
Yeah, I, I'll, you're talking soon as I can, I'm in Raleigh, and they, but I, I'll, I'll be, I'll be there close, four hours ago.
Let's say, let's say it's six thirty.
At six o'clock, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I think I'll save it sometime, so, I can...
Do six thirty.
I'll give you, so, okay.
So, is that a date?
I think it's...
I'm, I'm probably, y'all, or April, 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 I'll be late, but I'll save you something.
April the nineteenth.
For a long time, you're not eating.
That's what it was.
We're gonna go meet after, they'll determine that, yeah, but, last year, we hosted, we had a catered out at the airport, it was kind of a good idea to show our facility and also the school, so, we'll, we'll find a proper menu, but, uh, I like something slow.
How about on the bridge of our, uh, uh, where you're talking about?
Where the silver lining comes up.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go.
Big, 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 what?
It's tampering on it.
I just thought, yeah.
All right, gentlemen, that's, that's all I have.
Oh, good, gentlemen. I got one, sorry, I, I apologize. One quick thing, uh, just a quick, I'm sure you got this under reports, um, I, I'd ask, uh, uh, Jack Morgan to work on our planning board retreat. I'm ready to get back in action, so I'd ask him to set it up for, for sure, then I'll get my work out, so, yes, that would be good, so, that's all, yeah.
And I guess, just to clarify, it's already been in the media, I think we're all aware of Derek, Derek Rowan's resignation, I know, Commissioner Haven, I talked about it a little bit, and I think we're all agreeing, probably just go ahead and let, uh, someone advertise that, Jimmy, uh, but, at this point, uh, we need to do that work in the house with her, until we, until we, we're, I mean, but, yeah.
And I know, I've been getting calls up tomorrow, planning for him, but, but I just keep putting them on until we have chances, us as commissioners, to settle and hold and express our thoughts. So, I thought, I thought I'd go to that in our retreat.
I'll just ask him to...
All right.
You know, that's...
We'll get together and sit the...
We know.
Not that you got to.
Well, gentlemen, we've already got a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Okay.
All the favor, stand adjourned, thank you. Your time in attention.
Let's see, my letter.
Uh, can we pass back that one?
The, uh, Vietnam...
Oh, one more thing, uh, one more thing before y'all leave, at the Vietnam Veterans Parade, which is a week, this Saturday, March twenty-fourth, it's at eleven o'clock, and our sympathies also needs to go out to, to the employee from the town that we've worked with closely, uh, Linda Sloane's husband, Mike, of course, passed away suddenly, Linda's really in charge of this, but at that parade, uh, we are going to be presenting the families of, of those who lost their life in Vietnam, the Maconians who lost their life in, 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 uh, in the conflict of Vietnam, with some special presentations at that, uh, at that parade, so I think, uh, what we did, basically, we didn't want to give you that, we, we have a special presentation, and while we were in Washington, that we were able to come across, and, uh, we're going to present that to the families at that parade, so, it's eleven o'clock, I, Charlie, you heard of that, have y'all heard of that thing?
I heard of it, I know.
There's some flyers, I don't know, and I'm not...
I, I think that's the main reason, because, uh, Linda has, uh, and our sympathies and our hearts go out to Linda, but, uh, but it is the twenty-fourth, and that parade moves from town to town, the best I know, so, it's, it's eleven o'clock, right, boss?
Eleven o'clock, four o'clock.
And it's covered, we're just keeping on speaker at that parade, so...
Yeah.
We hope you'll come anyway.